Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. It is Monday, May 14th. For the City of Daly City, our regular council meeting. For those of you wishing to address the city council with any item on the agenda or under public appearances, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early as possible in this meeting. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gignona? Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you. Today, we have a presentation with Ms. Tasha Bartholomew, the Communication Manager for San Mateo County Transit District. We will have an update on Get Us Moving.
I'm here.
Hello, how are you?
Oh, good evening. I'm good, thank you. The presentation, I'm not sure if it's gonna come up?
I think he's working on it.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, or you mentioned, I'm Tasha Bartholomew and I'm the Communications Manager for the San Mateo County Transit District. And I'm here to talk to you all about Get Us Moving.
Thank you. We did have you guys over at the Dolger Senior Center the other week and did provide a town hall with some of our residents. So, thank you to Get Us Moving for doing that town hall for the residents in North County and doing it in Daly City.
Oh, great, thank you. We have plenty more to do and I'll share that with everyone. We're busy this month.
All right, here we go.
All right. Okay, so first, I want to say thank you for taking the time to hear from me today. I am here to give you all an update and overview of Get Us Moving. Today, I will walk through what happened during Phase One of our outreach, what we're planning for Phase Two, and how you all can help. So, through Get Us Moving, we are reaching out to the community to learn how San Mateo County residents think transportation funding should be spent. It's about identifying and prioritizing needs. Get Us Moving is a community engagement program to inform an $80 million a year funding plan to invest in San Mateo County's transportation needs. We want to make sure that the plan reflects the needs of each part of our county. And two-thirds of San Mateo County voters would need to approve the plan and it will only go to the voters if the San Mateo County Transportation District Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, there we go, approve it first. As you can see, during Phase One, we gathered a lot of feedback and input from the community. We did surveys, we held town hall meetings, we had presentations at city councils to different businesses and community and civic groups. And then, we also formed stakeholder and a technical advisory committee groups that have been meeting. We have posted on television, some of you may have seen our commercial. We've been active on social media and we also did some polling. We received more than 14,000 responses to our survey. And as you will see, we heard consistent themes with residents most concerned about highway traffic, local congestion and potholes, as well as improving transit service. The Phase One survey included a fill-in-the-blank section and we asked what barriers residents face in getting around the county. We read and hand-entered approximately 7,000 comments. And this image is a word cloud of the most common terms in those comments. The main component of the Phase One survey asked people to pick their top five priorities out of 12 options and to rank their top five in order. This chart shows what respondents listed as their very number-one priority. Right off, we see traffic on highways, traffic on local streets, and potholes coming in as the top three. We assigned a point value to each ranking and the mean score allows us to see the true sense of priorities because it takes the full ranking into account. What we learned is whether it's the top score or the mean score, traffic on highways and local streets, pothole repair, and improved public transit are the key issues coming from the community. Our survey was taken by residents around the county and here you can see a breakdown by region and city. We wanted to ensure that we were hearing from all corners of the county and you can see that we were very successful with that.
I have a quick question. On the North County, it says /Daly City and then it has Daly City.
I'm assuming that's by zip codes, right?
I believe so, but I'm not for certain, so I don't want to say yes or no.
Okay.
But let me make sure I get clarification on that.
But I do know that Colma and the east side of Daly City have the same zip code.
Okay, that would make sense. Okay, so we did some polling and of course, even with 14,000 responses, such a survey is self-selecting, so we also did some high-quality scientific polling. We polled last year and again this year. The margin of error was plus-minus 3.04% and plus-minus 4.3% for the split sample. The split tested an ongoing tax versus a tax at sunsets after 30 years. There was a clear preference with voters for the 30-year sunset, which is what we're planning to move forward with. This is an initial polling question and we asked essentially the same question last year to find out what voters' reactions would be this year. And we found that support for a half-cent sales tax for transportation funding increased over the past year, up to 74% from mid-high 60s last year. And this 74% takes the ballot measure well above the two-thirds of vote threshold needed for it to pass. We tested how positive messaging would impact support. And after hearing positive arguments in support of the measure, support went up to 78%. And we also tested some negative messaging because we needed to see how it would fare even if with strong negative messaging. And the results still show strong support, well within the margin of error. Because of this showing, even with pushing negative messages, the SAMTrans board and the County Board of Supervisors decided to move forward with Phase Two of the Get Us Moving outreach. During Phase Two, we will be developing a final spending plan and taking that to the SAMTrans board and the County Board of Supervisors this summer to make a decision on whether to place a half-cent sales tax on the November ballot. In the polling, we heard the same consistent themes, you know, that, you know, traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, and, you know, transit were priorities for residents. And this suggests that the ballot question, as tested in the survey, is in alignment with residents' priorities. In Phase One, we held four town halls. The format for the town halls consisted of a presentation summarizing the Get Us Moving initiative and a Q&amp;A, followed by a small group discussions and report outs from each group. And again, we heard the same consistent themes, traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, and transit, with some variation geographically. And we are preparing to hold four additional town halls for Phase Two and so, we've already begun that process this month in early May. So, each city was invited to participate on our technical advisory group and we do have representation from Daly City on that technical advisory group. And we also have a stakeholders advisory group that's made up of different groups and organizations, employers, businesses, community-based organizations, and bike advocates. And so, the stakeholder and technical advisory groups have been meeting consistently and they've been helping with a draft outline of an early funding plan to help us kind of put that together. And that brings us into what we're doing now in launching our Budget Challenge. So, the brand-new survey we've prepared for Phase Two is called Budget Challenge. We are asking residents to weigh priorities against each other. The new Budget Challenge allows you to allocate the $2.4 billion according to your own priorities and see how your budget compares to other residents. And people can access that survey at GetUsMovingSMC.com. The plan is to have categories of funding and there are not final categories and certainly not final allocation options. But based on what we heard in Phase One, these options help us move the conversation forward. So, to get people thinking about the hard choices and to get input to help us decide, the tool offers several broad categories and asks you to pick from three levels of funding for each category. The more you spend on one, the less you spend on others. And so, responses will help us shape the final funding plan. So, we definitely want to hear from you all and hear from residents and the community.
I have a question about this chart, I'm not quite getting it.
So, we have these different-
Let's look at public transit, for example.
So, it gives you the options, so I've taken it-
Oh, these are the options you have?
Yeah, these are the options we have. So, when I had taken the Budget Challenge, I went online and it's up to me to decide, okay, how would I want to spend this money? And it's based on percentages, so basically, you sign up and then you can, based on highways, how important are highways to you?
But you've only got those choices, 15 and 25 or none?
Yes, these are the only choices. But it's a little tricky, so you can, but it has to equal to 100%. When you take the Budget Challenge, you'll see that. It's interesting, though.
Because you can't say 25, 20, 60, 20, 10, and 20 because that's way more than 100%.
Yes, I kept overspending.
Yeah, you cannot overspend, okay.
I said, "Ooh, can't do that." All right. So, during the month of May, we're hosting a second series of town halls. And so, we just had one on May the 2nd here in North County and we have another one coming up this week in Burlingame and then we'll also be in Half Moon Bay and the North Fair Oaks area of Redwood City later this month. And any San Mateo County resident is welcome to come to the town hall, to any of the town halls, to participate. So, again, that's why I'm here to talk to you all to help get the word out with your constituents. So, like I said, with the new survey, we need your help. You know, please engage with our outreach efforts. I did bring some of these flyers. I hope it was okay, I put them on the back table for people to pick up and to get some more information from. But we do have a Facebook page and our website and if anyone has, you know, any questions aside from this meeting, they can always email info@GetUsMovingSMC.com.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bartholomew. Is there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
No, I just wanted to thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Sylvester.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for attending. Matter of fact, I took that survey a couple of months ago. And I can't stress the importance of our constituents getting and putting feedback for transit issues that we're having. It is very, very important. So, please, take the time to take the survey, let the folks know where you believe the money should be spent. And as such, what do they say? The squeaky wheel gets the-
Grease.
How you say it? The squeaky wheel gets the grease or whatever. But no, it's very, very important because you-
I speak up.
In San Mateo County, there's many cities within San Mateo County and every community is different. But we in Daly City are the biggest community and we want to make sure we get our share, for instance, east-west traffic instead of the north-south. So, make sure you voice your concerns and let's be heard out there. That's very important. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, councilmember, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have the Japanese Community Youth Council Student Photo Gallery 2018. These are the Daly City Prevention Team and youth participants. Please come up, oh. Well, since you're calling your team leader, do you guys use SAMTrans? Do any of you use SAMTrans? So, there's actually, raise your hand? Okay, so there's, right there, you can go on the website. You can fill out the survey in the future, but make sure your voice is heard because as young people, I know, you know, I use transit going to work, but as a young person, I remember using SAMTrans always. And so, it's so important to have your youth voice inputted as well.
Oh, it's her turn, sorry.
Yes, no worries.
Yeah, sorry about that. We have a lot of logistical things we're trying to figure out with our youth just now to just making sure everyone had a ride home or parents knew we were coming a little bit late tonight. But again, thank you so much for having us this evening. We really appreciate you all taking the time out of the scheduled agenda to have us present here today. Quick, just private one. Glenn Sylvester, thank you so much. You actually signed one of my, I want to say scholarships for the San Francisco Police Department way, way back when that helped me go to college and where I am today. So, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Very nice.
My dad also says hi, so we can- Another science conversation as well.
Wait a minute, what's your name again?
Kyle Nakaneishi. So, again, thank you so much. My name is Kyle Nakaneishi. I'm here representing the Japanese Community Youth Council. JCYC and the Jefferson Union High School District have partnered together to kind of build the momentum for a prevention- so, build the momentum for a youth or a prevention strategy, prevention implementation for underage alcohol and drug usage. And we're doing that with Daly City and in Daly City with all these youth right here. Prior to that, the school district had helped out with law enforcement through funding for the retail merchant programs, I believe it was a- let me pull that up really quickly, they had told me. It was a, oh, alcohol merchant compliance check. So, they had helped fund that. So, we're kind of all part of the same thing, working in high school, wanting to work in high schools, right now currently working in a middle school right now with Polisita Middle School. So, we've created this program called the Daly City Prevention Collaborative. And our first group started in January, obviously with Polisita Middle School. We've built an incredible youth group, as you see here, and you'll hear from them shortly. The group has been really committed in creating a positive impact in their community and we've discussed and we've explored different policies, social norms, and general information about the topics of alcohol usage and drugs. So, again, the meeting you had earlier about marijuana was a really good idea and really good example for them to kind of witness and see as well. And so, it's, our hopes with this program is to empower youth to want to create positive social change in their community. And so, without further ado, here they are.
Good evening, city council. As Kyle said, we are at the Daly City Prevention Collaborative. We are in Thomas Al Poly City Middle School. And our members are-
Alessandro.
Okay, you're gonna have to step up at the microphone there.
Alessandro.
Summer.
Jerel.
Angelica.
And DJ.
Brandon.
We are hosting a photo gallery event to showcase the photo contest at TRP.
The photo contest involves submissions of students at our school with the theme of think healthy and active- healthy and active, what do you do for funds instead of drinking or doing alcohol?
We wanted to help underage, we wanted to help-
Can you speak up? A little louder.
We wanted to help prevent underage alcohol and drug uses by using a positive social norms within our community.
We are asking if you would be interested in coming to support our event. We are the first DCPC group, so it would be really, really great if you would come to support our debut. Please come to our event. It is on Thursday, May 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at TRP Middle School.
Thank you for your time and I also have these papers.
Thank you so much for that presentation and thank you for your organizing efforts and really being the inaugural team to bring this forth. As you mentioned, you guys are the first team. It really is also always very heartwarming and inspiring to see young people voice, you know, what they're doing and their concerns, especially here at city council. You are our future leaders, so thank you for taking the initiative and we greatly appreciate your time. I've noted it down in my calendar and will try my best to be there. Thank you.
Mayor.
Member Sylvester.
Mr. Nakaneishi. Thank you so much. Your dad approached me quite a few months ago and said, "You told me about this program and I had no idea." But thank you for your due diligence and your continued efforts to make this aware of in Daly City and tell him I said hello.
I shall, thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we have the Rotary Club of Daly City and Colma with Wilhelmina, Santa Maria, and charter president.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, Mayor Manalo and councilmembers. I'm Willie Santa Maria, charter president of the Rotary. I think 35 years ago until 2013, there was a Rotary Club of Daly City that got dispersed in 2013, I think because the numbers went down to four members at that time. So, we re- revert, there's a rebirth of the Rotary Club. In 2015, we, and I know Ray was there, the installation and the, you know, the chartering of the new club. And it's called the Rotary Club of Daly City Colma Evening. And we meet every second and fourth Thursdays of each month at Fort McKinley and it's too bad it's not Daly City, but it's Fort McKinley in South San Francisco. We're here tonight and my colleagues are here, Myra and James. James is the current president. Because we would like the council to get to know us, that we are here to serve the community. There's more than 40 members to 50 members now made up of business people, retired administrators, school administrators like me, also, community leaders, entrepreneurs, and just people who would like to be part of an exciting group of people who would like to help out with our youth. That was very motivating and we are going to be there that Thursday. And senior citizens, those who need us, you know, the needy, the areas where there are very challenging areas of Daly City and you would like to really focus on Daly City. And I think we would like the council to really be partners with us because we are excited to really be involved with these local projects. Right now, we have two projects that we are involved in and one is the outdoor physical fitness equipment that is going to be installed at Westlake Park. And I think James will, you know, talk more about it because Director Curran was part of it, you know, when we had gotten a grant of $10,000, but we had to, we had to come up with $24,000 in order for us to get these 11 pieces of equipment. The other is that data has it that Daly City has the biggest number of obese people and diabetic people. And UC is doing a research and doing a program to help the community of Daly City to, you know, address these issues of obesity. And so, we are part of that. You know, Dr. Bender, who is a Filipino-American researcher, is now in churches and in schools because it is the same for the youth and the adults, you know, that thing. So, we're also going to establish and interact at the high school level. And we are also thinking of, or not thinking, but we are going to be, you know, giving awards to five students, you know, who are college-bound, and scholarship awards of $1,000 each. So, on June 16th, which is a Saturday, the club will have a major fundraising event. It's a dinner dance and it's also an installation of the new officers. And it's going to be at the Lake Merced Country Golf Course. And I hope that all the council members, including Ms. Martell, our city manager, will be there. I know that Val is gonna be there, you know, part of the help. And Mr. Sylvester, you have your ticket, so we expect-
Madam.
And Ray and Ms. Christensen to, you know, be there. You know, it's a pleasure to meet all of you. And I was going to suggest to the mayor that if we can have a liaison from Rotary to get to know more about your projects here at the city, that we can actually, you know, make sure that we help out and we have a special committee to take a look at that. So, with that, thank you very much for the evening. And James, would you like to talk about the project?
Good evening, honorable council members and honorable mayor. I'm the current president of the Rotary Club and this morning, I was, had the opportunity of distributing dictionaries to all of the third graders in Daly City. The school that I went to this morning is Woodrow Wilson Elementary and I was able to converse a little bit with Sarah Rich, who was the principal. And what was interesting about our conversation is the fact that she was also a beneficiary of the Rotary Club in the form of scholarships, in the form of education. And she also had a parent that was also a Rotarian. And it struck me, it was very interesting because what she said kind of summed up everything about the Rotary Club here in Daly City and that is, she wanted to give back to the community that the Rotary had helped her so much. And she's doing it as the principal of Woodrow Wilson. And so, this is just one of the many projects that the Rotary Club is doing. We have other schools that we will be distributing these dictionaries to third graders. Willie had mentioned about the Dolger Senior Center, this exercise equipment. And honorable mayor, I know that you've seen this before. I know that council member Judith has seen that a year ago when our esteemed Glenn Mayor Sylvester gave us that, basically, a resolution, you know. And the Dolger Senior Center is probably a good place. I know, just as a site that we're looking at is next to the Dolger Senior Center. It won't be at Westlake, I think that would be probably not in the cards right now. But the problem that we're gonna be looking at for that particular project is mostly on the public works site. And I'd be willing to lend my time to be able to address public works to see if the site can be somehow massaged to the point where we can actually install these machines. The machines have to be on stable ground. Right now, they're sand and it needs to be replaced with gravel. I've been in conversation with Director Curran about the site and it's also a flooded area too, whenever it rains. So, again, hopefully, if we can get over the hurdle of some of the public works issues in that particular site, then we can move ahead with fundraising, getting grants to actually get the machines and finally get them installed. So, that's one of the projects that we're doing. And again, one of the things that, just to sum up, I want to emphasize what Willie Santa Maria had said. The Rotary Club has had a storied history here in Daly City and for about 57 years. Unfortunately, sometime, you know, members start to age and drift away. And so, Willie, as a charter president, has done a great service to this city in enabling us to be able to reinvigorate or renew- in, in enabling us to be able to re-invigorate or renew the presence of the Rotary Club here in Daly City. A good example is, look at, let's look at our neighbor, South San Francisco. They have the South San Francisco Rotary and they had just uh finished uh putting together a um low-income housing for seniors at four-three-three Alida, which is uh, you know, Don El Camino. It's about several hundred units. And uh they have a foundation that numbers above twenty-four million dollars. We, we're very modest right now. I, I could tell you that with all the effort. And I don't know, you've probably seen this uh graphic before and I'll, I'll show it to you again one more time. And um, you know, it's funny because charts, if you look at the little chart here that we have, they have a, they have a, a habit of downplaying all of the long hours and effort that we've had. And uh the only thing we have to show for is just really uh incremental increases. And then the green area is where we're at right now in our treasury. So we're growing, uh, and so I, I think it would be very helpful for the council to uh assist us. Uh, the Rotary Club will be a resource for the city to be able to provide volunteers, fundraising assistance, and anything that you can think of. As a matter of fact, if this project, for instance, is not feasible, I encourage uh the council to suggest other projects that we can do that are related to uh obesity and health in, in the city of Daly City. I think all of us here in the audience, you know, if we were to do our own research, the conclusion will be incontrovertible that we are all, you know, we really i- in the need for uh addressing the youth obesity uh crisis and also having uh people coming down with type, uh type-two diabetes. So with that, um, I'll take any questions and if there aren't any, uh, I want to again, thank you from the bottom of our heart uh on behalf of Willie and myself for inviting us to address uh this council and to let you know what's happening here at the Rotary Club of Daly City.
Thank you so much. At this point, are there any questions or comments for my colleagues?
No, just thank you so very much for your presentation and for all the work you're doing.
Yes.
Thank you both.
All right.
Thank you very much. I think uh it's really important to have organizations like the Rotary. Um, and with community service and giving back, it's really um a collaboration in enhancing, you know, the, the health of our community. And your uh mission right now around providing healthier opportunities for the youth and adults is something that um the community can benefit from. So thank you very much.
I have a question, actually.
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it's actually, I think it was Willie and A- Audrey, is there, was there an Audrey? Long time ago, but um, I was um.
That was your ex-girlfriend.
I was invited by you folks a long time ago when I first got on the council. I remember you had some gatherings at um, outback. Do you still do that?
Uh, not anymore. You know, we do it, you know, uh, at Jade Dragon.
Oh, okay.
You know, and Jack is also a member, so, and he's a business owner, so.
Okay.
That's pretty cool. And so, you know, he's very nice, very nice to the Rotary.
How often does your group meet?
Uh, we meet actually every Monday night, you know, for the executive board, because you really wanna plan. Um, you know, we're really excited to get all these uh different programs and projects. But we meet every Tu- second Tuesday, Thursday and fourth Thursday of each month.
Okay, all right.
So we would like to invite you and just drop by and.
Yeah.
And I think it makes it, it makes a difference, you know, if our council members and the mayor, you know, they are members of the Rotary. You know, there's about uh forty-five um Rotary Clubs in San Mateo, San Francisco and Marin. And um it's called the District Fifty-One Fifty. And, and Daly City, we have, and it, it's, it's uh amazing because our club has ninety percent Filipinos and ten percent, you know, so we're trying to make it a diverse group. However, I think we also would like to make sure that we would like to uh, you know, really emphasize the fact that, you know, we wanna serve our community and that uh we people who have, you know, gone through all that, you know, uh, y- you know, like for example, for me, I, I, I'm a, a retired school administrator, assistant superintendent. I retired from Oakland and San Francisco Unified. So uh I'd like to really focus on the youth, you know, here in Daly City because I've never had a chance to do that, you know, when I worked. So that would be uh one of our really uh major projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have proclaiming May twenty to twenty-six, twenty eighteen as National Public Works Week. We have Director John Fuller of Public Works.
So we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Uh, whereas May twenty to twenty-six is celebrated as National Public Works Week. And whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of the men and women who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works with the twenty-eighteen theme of the power of public works. And whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work programs such as water, sewer, streets, public buildings, parks, stormwater pollution prevention and traffic management. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services and the efforts and skills of dedicated public works employees. And where, whereas so long as the design, construction, operation and maintenance of these facilities work smoothly, the people behind the scene are often forgotten. So now therefore I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and the members of our City Council of the City of Daly City do hereby proclaim May twenty to twenty-six as National Public Works Week in the City of Daly City and call upon the residents and civic organizations in the community to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing effective public works and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, comfort and quality of life. Signed.
I, I would like to, oh, oh, there's a camera. There, it's behind me. I just wanted to say that although I'm the Public Works Director and, and this is a recognition of National Public Works Week, as you heard in the proclamation, in a lot of cities, water and sewer are also part of public works. And so I would also ask you to recognize the Department of Water, Wastewater, where we have a separate department for those two functions. And I think it's also uh clear in the, in the resolution that it's not somebody like me that, that, that makes this happen. It's the rank-and-file employees who work every day to fill the potholes, to put up the signs, to paint the curb red, whatever it is that we do to take care of this building, to keep the air conditioning running, whatever. And we are going to be recognizing our employees with a barbecue next Wednesday at the Corporation Yard. So if you'd like to join us, that barbecue starts at eleven-thirty, I believe, uh, at the Corporation or the twenty-third. I don't even know what the menu is yet, to tell you the truth, because my diligent staff has taken care of that for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do and all the stuff for the City of Daly City. Now we have uh proclaiming May twenty eighteen as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We have Manufu Li Aga Anue, President of the Jefferson Elementary School District.
So this is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May twenty eighteen. Whereas this month, we celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we recognize the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our nation. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves in the arts, literature and sports, they are leading researchers in science, medicine, technology, dedicated teachers to our nation's children, innovative farmers and ranchers and distinguished lawyers and government leaders. And whereas there are more than twenty million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States, Daly City alone has approximately fifty-nine thousand seven-hundred-sixteen Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, which accounts for fifty-eight point two percent of the population within the city. Each day through their actions, they make America more vibrant, more prosperous and, and as age and more secure. Our nation is particularly grateful to the many Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who have served and currently serve in our armed forces, protecting the nation and promoting freedom and peace around the world. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, let us celebrate the many contributions of our AAPI brothers and sisters that have made it to the American Mosaic. And let us renew our commitment to creating more opportunities for AAPI youth as they grow up and embrace the hard work of active citizenship, adding their unique voices and experiences to our nation's narrative. Now therefore I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and the members of our City Council of Daly City do hereby proclaim May twenty eighteen as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourage all residents of Daly City to learn more about the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage.
Thank you. This is how we say thank you in my culture. It's from the top of our head. And if you uh meet other Pacific Islanders, that's how we greet each other, head to head. Um, because the space between us is very sacred. On behalf of the Pacific Islander community, um, I'm deeply honored to be one of the many representatives that do stellar work throughout San Mateo County, but in particular Daly City and North County. You know, Daly City being um the neighbor to San Francisco has in many ways in San Mateo County been able to be the model for um, for us, at least in the Pacific Islander community and setting the tone of leadership. Council uh member Michael Gingona isn't here today, but he appointed Linda Massoli as a library commissioner many years ago when he first became mayor of City Council. She was the first Pacific Islander to serve in this capacity throughout the county. And I was then told that she was the first Pacific Islander to serve on a commission in north, northern California. And that happened here in Daly City. We also have here in Daly City a vice president, or I'm sorry, a secretary uh to the PTA at Ben Franklin Middle School. He's also uh a number-one contender for a seat at San Francisco Unified School District. And we look forward to seeing him represent Daly City on behalf of his son as well. But I am deeply honored to receive this um also um on behalf of Reyna Meafua, who has served as commissioner to this city and many other Pacific Islanders who do great work. Um, we are the largest uh Pacific Islander community out of Hawaii, right here based in the Bay Area. And as mentioned in the proclamation, we have a huge number of them represented here in Daly City. Um, Camp Unity has uh been a summer enrichment program right here in Daly City for the past seven summers. But we unfortunately have been facing, you know, the struggle of budget cuts. And unfortunately, we can't continue to be a home for our Daly City students. But we'll continue that program at College of San Mateo, um, which has offered us a home. When we speak to learning of the Pacific Islander community, I wanted to make the council and the community know that there are great programs that uh we have. College of San Mateo has a certificated program in ethnic studies, which is uh to learn about the Pacific Islander community. Um, and we have an AA degree program now at City College of San Francisco. Those are programs that were aligned with Camp Unity, our summer enrichment program. And all that started here in Daly City. So I da- I take great pride to know there are a lot of Pacific Islander happenings. I can't specifically speak to the Asian community, but I can to the Pacific uh Islander community. And I say thank you for this opportunity. I know that I, I um share this with the Pacific Islanders with great pride and gratitude. And I hope that we can continue to be con- contributed to the, uh, to the fabric of our, our wonderful city. So fa malo, fa fitai and big aloha. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your leadership and all you do for our communities.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, do uh have, we have the regular meetings for April twenty-third, twenty eighteen. Do I have a motion to approve uh the regular meeting uh minutes of uh the twenty-third on April twenty-eighteen?
So, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, do I have a motion to approve the a- agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our public hearing. Agenda item number nine, it is the consideration of new fees for the Daly City After School Youth Recreation Program, aquatic lessons and field and facility rentals. We have staff member Mister Kern and um at this point, um, we'll lend you for your presentation.
Oh, this is what's in there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you, as you just stated, was a consideration of some new fees in the Daly City Recreation Division. Um, and I did hand out a copy of the PowerPoint along with a revised version of the staff report. Um, in the report that was published, there was a table missing and it's included in here. There's a table with the rental fees. I apologize for that omission. It was uh presented in its entirety to the Recreation Commission a while ago and the Recreation Commission endorsed the whole package of fees that we're bringing forward today. I forgot my clicker. So the first one is our After School Youth Recreation Program, affectionately known as AyrP in our business. Uh, we're currently at four schools, Daniel Webster, Uniper Sera, M.H. Tobias and Panorama. That may change in the fall. Uh, we're, we may have these four, we may have a fifth one added. And for the current school year, the base fee is sixty-four dollars a month. And for the beginning of next school year, we're proposing a five-dollar increase to bring the monthly base fee up to sixty-nine dollars. And as we talked about when we made our budget presentation a few weeks ago, one of our motives here is uh to try and narrow the gap of the subsidy to this program. As you can see, the actual expenses run about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars a year. While we're bringing in right now about a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in revenue. So we're gonna tighten that up a little bit, get over the two-hundred-thousand-dollar mark in revenue and working towards making this a more cost recovery program. Another set of things, uh fees that we're proposing to increase, effect of, affect our aquatics program. And right now, we've got programs from preschool through advanced lifeguard classes. Our typical base fee for, for most of our students is about fifty-three dollars per session for Daly City residents and sixty-six dollars for non-residents. Um, and it goes up and down depending on what type of lessons you're taking. Is, is high as a hundred-and-ninety-three dollars for the lifeguard classes that we offer. Uh, proposed fee, we are for preschool suggesting sixty-five dollars for a session, sixty dollars for youth, teen and swimmer aid classes. And for semi-private lessons that we offer, those would go to one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for the session.
Oh, I have a question. What is a session?
It's used about six weeks and it varies a little bit.
Okay.
Any other, I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm going kind of quickly here, but if you have any questions either about AyrP or aquatics, if not, we'll move on.
Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
How does this uh impact the Daly City Dolphins?
Not at all. It's not, not a consideration.
Uh, do we have uh ideas to the cost recovery for the aquatic side of things as you provided up on top for AyrP?
Um, it, it is a narrower gap there. We generate a lot more revenue in aquatics programs. Um, but there's still a subsidy, the, the cost of the lifeguards and, and our joint use of the pool.
Thank you.
But it's closer.
Gotcha.
And it puts us in line with proposed fee closer to what most of the other public swim lessons are in the Bay Area, specifically around this part of the peninsula. Okay, and we're going to move on to field and facility rentals. And as you know, a lot of our facilities, we do rent out for parties and special events. Also, our gymnasiums and baseball fields and soccer fields. So we do it at an hourly rate for residents, and we also offer a one-time discount for nonprofits, 40% off once a year for Daly City resident nonprofit groups, for nonprofit groups based outside of Daly City. We also have a one-time 20% discount for them. For non-residents, and a lot of non-residents do rent our facilities, they do pay a non-resident fee of $75. We've also reviewed our insurance with our carrier, and there's some suggested changes to that. And all the renters that use our facilities do have to pay an insurance fee on top of the rental. And right now, that varies anywhere from $105 for smallest to about $200 for larger We also require a deposit from renters, and those are refundable. And right now, we charge $250 for most of the facilities, with the exception of gymnasiums, which we charge an $800 deposit. Again, that's fully refundable if the renter lives up to their end of the bargain and takes good care of the facility, that is reimbursed. On rare occasion, when they don't, we take some or all of that deposit back. Get into the finer print here. So right now, we have a whole range of fees for the different clubhouses. Hillside Park and Marchbank Park is $50 an hour. We're proposing that goes up to $60 an hour. Larkum Clubhouse, the number next to each clubhouse there is a capacity. Eighty-five is $75 an hour, proposing to raise that to $85 an hour. And then we notice we have a lot of facilities that are in 130 to 150 person capacity. That includes the Geller Clubhouse, the War Memorial Activity Room, Cafe Dolger, Lawson Hall, Merced Room, and Tali Community Center. You can see, under the current fee schedule, there was sort of a whole range of fees, anywhere from $85 to $100, or actually $75 up to $100 an hour. We're proposing to bring all of those under the same fee of $110 an hour. And then Lincoln Community Center is slightly bigger, a bigger capacity, and we're proposing to go from $125 an hour to $130 an hour there, so a $5 increase there. The gymnasiums, much bigger capacity, Bay Shore Gym have 300 people, War Memorial 300, and Pacelli Event Center Gym, we can fit as many as 588. And those fees are at $200 an hour. We are proposing to keep those fees the same. We did a study of gym rentals for, this is not athletic rental, this would be for a party, fundraiser, big event. And $200 is about the going rate for that, so we thought we were in line already, we didn't have a need to adjust that fee. But the insurance costs are going to go up a little bit, depending on what type of party, if there's no alcohol involved, and depending on the number of people there, insurance is somewhere between $105 and $140. And that goes up a little bit if there is alcohol served at the event, and that's $165 for a smaller one, and $200 for a party between 100 and 500 capacity. 500 is kind of the high end of where our capacity is in these facilities. So we talked about the deposit fee. So the deposit currently for our facilities between 49 and 160 people is $250. And again, the gym's at 800. We're proposing that the smaller facility, the clubhouses, the deposit stay at $250, but we're bumping that up to the medium sized, between 85 and 300, or excuse me, 85 and 160 capacity, the deposit would be 400. 300 up, most of the gyms would require an $800 deposit, and then at the Pacelli Event Center, it would be up to 1,000. We are, we allow, once a rental has entered into agreement, we allow them to make a change one time. And that's a $50 fee to do that, we're not planning to change that. There's also a current late fee, if they don't pay their full amount on time, there's a $50 fee for that. We're proposing as an incentive to get people to pay on time of raising that to $100. And we currently have a $75 flat fee for non-residents who rent our facilities, and we're proposing to raise that to $100. And the picnic shelter at Geller Park for residents, it's $100, and we're proposing to make that $125 per day. We also rent out the classrooms at War Memorial and Dolger Center. And we're currently at $25 an hour for classrooms at Dolger and $30 for War Memorial, and we are proposing no changes in those two. Our athletic rentals are a little bit different. We have the softball fields and the soccer field over at Geller Park. So right now, it's $20 an hour to rent a baseball field and $30 for non-residents. We are proposing to raise that $30 an hour for residents and $40 for non-residents. And on the synthetic field over at Geller, and also one at Polisita, right now, it's a very weird $66 an hour rate. And for schools outside of Daly City, it's 50. And for private schools within Daly City, it's 35. We are proposing making it universally $75 an hour for all renters of the turf fields. And the grass field, which is the field next to the synthetic field at Geller Park, rents out for the low, low price of $33.33 an hour now.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
And it's, it is a, it's an accountant's nightmare. They really would like to make that a nice round number, like $40 an hour is proposed. Lights for the ball diamonds, we currently charge an extra $10 if the lights are turned on. We're proposing that go to 20. And we do offer doing the lines for the baseball fields, we charge $10 for that one time now, and we're proposing to raise that to 20. Most of our renters take care of chalking the field on their own. It's not a service we provide that often, but we do offer it. And another big change for our gymnasiums, right now, there are three very different rates. The regular rental rate for this, again, for athletic purposes, is $75 an hour. There was a school fee for outside schools, outside of Daly City, at $50 an hour, and a $35 an hour for Daly City private school. We're proposing that everybody pay the same, $100 for all, unless they reserve any upper and lower gym at War Memorial, that would be $250 an hour. I think the three gymnasiums that we offer in Daly City are excellent compared to the gyms that you find around. And our closest comparison also in Daly City is the gym at Cermoni Del Ray, which waits for $135 an hour, which is nowhere nearly as nice as what we offer for.
And how much do they charge?
They charge $135, and it stinks in there, and the floor has got cracks in it, and the rims are bent, and yeah. So $100 an hour sounds like a lot, but it's less than the going rate still in the Bay Area. And right now, we do not have a insurance fee in place. Our insurance broker wants us to take care of that and start charging insurance fee along with that. And the proposal for that is $215 for the smaller uses and $360 for larger uses.
And that's regardless of how many hours they're there?
Yeah.
Just per event?
But I believe they can carry that, if they rent over several days, they only need the one, one-time payment. They don't have to pay each individual time. And then something new, that I think the mayor and councilmember Sylvester was at, were at the meeting of the Recreation Commission, where they talked about allowing cars to park at Westlake Park overnight at $8 per car. This is rare, but it does happen when the seniors do overnight trips. Sometimes they're gone for three or four days, and the bus picks them up at the park, and they would like the option to leave their cars there. And we actually talked to some of our users, and they thought $8 a night was very reasonable. And we also charge $5 per court, per hour, for tennis courts, which we almost never reserve. It's, in Daly City, it's still kind of a pickup style, first come, first served, and we haven't taken a tennis reservation in a long time. But we look forward to the day when the tennis courts at Geller Park and Westlake resurface, and when the demand rises there, we probably would fold that into a reservation system at $5 per hour. That is it. I know that's a lot of numbers and a lot of figures. This is a process that hasn't been undertaken in many, many years, and, you know, we made our pledge when we started going through the budget exercise that we would try to increase revenue for the Department of Library and Recreation Services. And it's hard to do on the library side because everything is free, but on the recreation side, we realized that there were a lot of fees, that we were way below market, and just bumping up a little bit would certainly help a lot.
Thank you for your presentation. At this point, I do have a question. You mentioned that the fees haven't been raised for many, many, many years. Just exactly when were the fees last?
Before my time, it's not long ago. Prior to 2011.
So prior, so was, what was the exact date?
I don't have an exact date. And I, they've never been all taken together. They've been kind of piecemeal, the fees have been changed. But I think it's probably not within the last 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Sylvester.
Mr. Kern, thank you so much for your report. I have a couple of questions. Number one, going back to your slide on the types of fees, Geller Park, War Memorial, Cafe Dolger, Lawson Hall, and a few. Now, I see that Lawson Hall is going to jump from 75 to 110. And basically, they take the biggest jump, but yet, I'm trying to put myself in the position of a person wanting to rent that hall, no parking, but yet, they're going to be, they're going to be charged the same amount as any other hall which has greater amenities. I'm concerned about that. Lawson Hall, from 75 to 110. And, you know, if I was a renter, I'd say, hey, if I'm going to be paying 110, I'm going to try to choose the best place that I can have, providing we have the space. So I just have a little concern about that. And the same applies for Geller Park Clubhouse. And until you went to another slide talking about the picnic area, I thought the Geller Park Clubhouse included the picnic area, but it doesn't.
It's two separate things.
And I know folks use that picnic area because we got a good one there. So I, I mean, is there any room for, how do you say it? Does it have to go up that much? Or we're just trying to raise it to 110 per hour for all facilities for convenience sake?
That is a great question, and this is a proposal, so it is not etched in stone until the City Council adopts a resolution setting the fee, so it's certainly something we can discuss. And you're right, we were really focusing on the capacity of the halls and trying to group like capacities together, but you make a good point, Lawson Hall doesn't have the same amenities, you know, that Tali or, you know, Merced.
Right.
So, I mean, if it's the pleasure of the City Council to break that one out and either keep it at 75 or some other.
Or move it up to the Larkum, to the Larkum category.
We could group it with Larkum, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Larkum.
Directly above.
I see. Yeah, but Larkum, it's only, there's no change.
No, well, oh, I see.
No, it's gone up to 85.
Larkum is going from 75 to $85 an hour.
Right. And, okay. Well, that was my thought. Any idea as to how much, if we go by this, and based upon our history, as the mayor alluded to, how much increase in revenue will we estimate it to receive?
And we did include that in our budget presentation.
Just a roundabout idea, like.
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, because, you know, I think it's needed because of deferred maintenance issues as well, and we need some help. But at the same time, I think folks should get what they pay for in the sense of facilities. So that's, that's the only question that I have. Geller Park and Lawson and the Merced Room, where is that?
The Merced Room is the room adjacent to Pacelli Gym. There's a kitchen there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I should open, I use it, but.
So, so councilmember Sylvester, did you want to move Lawson Hall up to the Larkum Clubhouse and change it from $75 an hour to 85?
I think that's very reasonable, Councilmember Christiansen. That's very reasonable, because Lawson Hall, there's hardly any amenities there. And is it rented now? Do we get folks?
We do. Yeah, we do.
I mean, would I think by raising to 110, if you think folks ain't coming there now, they ain't going to come there later either.
They come, it's generally locals that rent that from the neighborhood.
Lawson Hall, Geller Park Clubhouse, 85 to 110, 85 to 110. I feel uncomfortable, and, you know, I think we can come to a happy medium here, maybe, you know, $15, 80, well, 85 to 95 or something like that, $10 an hour. But to jump all the way up to 110, I think that's extraordinary. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I mean, for the ones that are notated at 85, moving them up to 95, yeah, or 100 seems more reasonable. I mean, around just people, you know, utilizing the facility, and then all of a sudden, there's that jump. I do have a question, but I, yeah, I see that, because it's a larger jump than people utilizing Teclia or Cafe Dolger, right?
Mayor, one last point I'd like to also bring up, too. I see that there is no discount for Daly City residents. Any reason why, other than they don't have to pay, was it the flat?
The non-resident fee. Yeah, the rates, all the residents pay the same rate if they live in Daly City, that is the discount. The premium is if you live outside of Daly City, you pay a non-resident fee.
Of $75?
Right.
But there's no discount?
No, the discount, it assumes, these prices are the discounted prices. And if you live out of Daly City, you pay this amount plus 75.
But it's a fee, not $75 per hour.
Right, it's a flat fee.
Then I think, being a resident of Daly City, you're not getting much. I mean, raise it more for non-residents or something like that.
I'm open to that.
Most events are several hours, so you're talking $25 an hour, they're paying extra if it's a three-hour event.
But I do see your point, councilmember Sylvester, that there isn't as, I mean, there's not a indication of, okay, well, for, or it did have it before for the athletic fields or whatnot. You know, there was a difference, but.
Yeah, on page five, if you look at the bottom chart, you see the non-resident fee?
Yeah.
They're proposing that go up to 100. And that's for all the different kinds of rentals, correct? It says facility rentals.
So when this first was initiated, there was rentals that said, regular rental, DC outside school, DC private school. Can you explain a little bit further about that?
It is a mystery to me, but I can tell you that there's a huge disparity in what like agencies are paying for gyms. And not to pick on Our Lady of Mercy, but that's one that comes to head, to mind. that's one that comes ahead to mind. Our Lady of Mercy rents the gym for $35 an hour. Others are paying $100 an hour, or $75, $75 an hour. And nobody could explain to me why that arrangement is, there's no agreement in writing.
So where is that on these papers?
If you look on, uh-
Is it in the blue packet or the?
It's on the staff, it's on the staff report.
Okay.
Athletic and gym rentals.
Page, well, whatever.
Can we prioritize our Daly City schools at least?
I got it right here.
I mean, since they're, this is like most likely residents.
Yeah, private schools. No, that's not right.
I didn't think so either. And-
Well, then let's change it.
Well, that, that's the proposal is, is right now, there's, there's three different rates. There's a regular gym rental that a regular group would, would pay. And we have a lot of club sports, both in the club basketball and volleyball that use our gyms. They pay $75 an hour. Schools outside of Daly City, which is interesting that there isn't a school rate for Daly City schools, because a lot of them have their own gyms. But anyway, outside of Daly City, we pay $50 an hour. And then private schools within Daly City, and that could mean Our Lady of Mercy, Hildale, Holy Angels, no, not Holy, OLPH. But-
Or any of the charter schools.
Yeah, but the only one-
No, they're public, but kind of private, but.
The only customer that I know that, that is taking advantage of that $35 an hour rate is Our Lady of Mercy for their basketball and volleyball program, because Our Lady of Mercy does not have a gym. So they use our gyms quite a bit.
Well, there's a significant disparity between what a private school plays, pays and what a, another school from another community pays. It's fairly significant per hour. I'm assuming that an event is three or four hours minimum. And if it's a tournament, it's even more than that.
Practice, sometimes a couple of hours.
Practice, would be two hours.
And, and the high schools and middle schools, they all have their own gyms. So the public schools aren't using our gyms, other than the club, club sports, AAU sports.
I think, I think we ought to bring this more in line in fairness to everyone using. I see what you've done already regarding the facilities, but now as for the gyms, I think it should also be on a fairness rate. Anything for 501(c)(3) organizations, do they get a discount?
They do, you know, once a year.
Did I read somewhere 40%?
Once a year, 40%.
Once a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something.
Yeah.
But I think it should be on a fair basis for everyone unless they're 501(c)(3), which you've covered. And we've got to do something about our deferred maintenance costs.
What is the, you had mentioned that, I don't think you listed here the, the fee for the Jamona Pool. Is there a fee there to use to rent the?
You can rent the pool for pool parties. We are not proposing any changes in the pool party rentals.
Okay. Because that, I think, I thought was a very popular-
It is. In fact, I was, I was talking to somebody before the meeting who was saying that she's planning her kid's birthday party there in October. And it is so easy because you come in and then you leave and you don't have a big mess to deal with. The kids swim and have fun and they have a classroom where they can have cake and pizza or whatever. But, yeah, it's-
What is the fee now?
I don't have that committed to memory, but I want to say in the neighborhood of about $400. And well, this, it depends on, you can take over the whole pool or you can share it. And if you share it and only use a piece of the pool, it's cheaper. But in the, in the neighborhood of $400 for three hours.
And we provide lifeguards.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That's what you're paying for is the lifeguard.
And the more kids involved, the more lifeguards.
The lifeguards, yeah.
Yeah. But we're not proposing changes to those rates.
And Lawson Hall, is that the hall that a lot of the seniors use? Where they have their meetings?
There is a lot of programs out there that we don't charge for. The Protos Mobile, they do a couple different, the brown bag food distribution, those kind of programs we don't charge for. So it gets rented for, for birthday parties, that, you know, baby showers, those kinds of things.
And, and at least my experience with Lawson Hall is, has been that it's neighborhood people.
I think that's true.
Who basically walk from their house or they park in the neighborhood for a baby shower or a, you know, retirement party or something like, I've been to a number of events there. And that's the old building that's, it's not in as good a shape as the other buildings. The restrooms are significantly challenged, so we say.
You know, and I will add too, that when, something we launched about a month ago, if you go to our website now, you can do a 360 virtual tour of all of our facilities. And we had a great intern from San Francisco State, that was her project. She just presented it to her professor last week. And if you've not been in our facilities and you're curious what we're talking about, you can go to dailycity.org, click on Recreation Facility Rental. Actually, you can go to dailycity.org/rentals and you can do a 360 tour of the interior of every one of our facilities that we rent.
I think that-
Do you rent online?
We, no, we don't rent online. Part of the reason is, is the agreement that we have is a pretty involved process. So it tends to be about a 20-minute transaction, going, going over all the rules and regulations.
Can you see if a facility is available online?
You currently cannot. So typically, people will call or email and say, hey, is Geller open on August 22nd? And we can check online. We can, we can check online, but that portal's not open to the public.
Was the, what, these proposed increases, was there community outreach about the increases?
No, I mean, it's a public hearing and-
No, I mean, when it went to Recreation Commission?
We did, we went, we took all three of these separately to the Recreation Commission, one for the aquatics, one for the facilities and the other for the after-school program. And there weren't this many people in the audience.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, before we go into a recommended action, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Yeah.
And we have one card, Manufo.
Two cards.
Actually, we have two, but.
Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I've been a consumer of the facilities as a renter for over 30 years. And I would just like to ask the council members to be mindful of maintaining the Daly City resident incentive. I think it's important that we, we see the discount. I've heard a, a great conversation of ensuring that, but I do want to encourage that we continue to keep a discounted rate for our, our Daly City residents. But I also wanted to touch on another point. As I alluded to earlier, Camp Unity will no longer have a home here in Daly City. And I heard a mention of other programs, something that I also facilitate at Cerro Monte del Rey is our Food Mobile program. So I don't know how that matter is handled or how you deem a program free of rent, but I think it's important that we recognize it. I'm not just speaking for Camp Unity. I have over 10, and I've had this conversation with councilmember Sylvester in the past. I have over 10 organizations, mostly athletic, who have difficulty in, in raising the monies and the insurance fees. And these are all Daly City, Daly City youth. I think it's important that we remember these are public spaces. I get, I get that there's a financial issue. I get that there's a budgetary issue. But when we allow these to remain public spaces and open to our, our, our communities, that serves as a deterrent because they have a space that is in their, in their communities, in their neighborhood, that they can run these programs. A lot of these programs now that I have connected them to, unfortunately, because they couldn't afford to stay here, they are renting facilities on our borders, right here in Ocean View and Lakeview. I'd rather that not be the case. But the reality, these are Daly City students who have to be trained in basketball, volleyball, outside of our city. All I'm asking is that we figure out a way as a community, how can we keep them here? I, it's very important. These programs serve as a safe haven for so many of our youth. And we are in a difficult time. And all I'm asking is that you be mindful of that. Camp Unity can't stay here anymore.
Is that?
And so many other programs.
Is that why you're, you're leaving?
That is why we're leaving. And I'm a school board member. I'm leaving because we cannot afford to pay $10,000 in rent. And I, I would have all the families that we serve stand here before me, but I don't want to do that. I don't want to subject them to that. But there's, we have served over 3,000 families. But this summer, Daly City, Coma, Brisbane, San Bruno, families that come all the way to Daly City will not be served this year because they're not going to drive to College of San Mateo. But College of San Mateo is providing us free space and, and also funding. So I, I leave that before you and I ask that you please consider the community, working class community, family of five children. They can't afford to send their children to programs that charge 100 a pop. That's why we created Camp Unity here in Daly City. So I leave that with you and I, I, you know, I beg, I beg your, your thoughtfulness and your compassion when considering. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I can ask a question.
Sure.
Mr. Curran, is there a, does the director have discretion to waive a fee or give it a, at a lesser rate? Is that within the director's?
I've, I've never waived the fees. We do have some, she mentioned some of the food distribution programs. They've, they've not been charged. Homeowners groups not been charged. But I want to be clear too, we, we do serve the youth community primarily. These are outside of those parameters. We had over 1,000 kids playing in our Daly City Youth Basketball League. Those kids practice in our gyms for free. It's part of the program. I shouldn't say for free. They, they, they pay for a program, but you know, over eight and 10 weeks, they are in our gyms. They're not paying the rate you saw there. It's included in, in their season. We also have after-school programs to drop in for the kids. The rates we're talking about are rentals for either parties or social gatherings in the clubhouses, community centers, or the gymnasiums that those are, that are being rented primarily by for-profit basketball clubs, you know. And they need a place for their, their kids to play. So it seems fair that if they're charging their players to be part of their team, that in turn, they pay for the space that they practice in. It's kind of our philosophy.
I was just this last week at Kaiser for an extended period of time, and the two women next to me were talking, I couldn't see them, there was a curtain between us, but the conversation was, oh, God, I don't know what to do with my kids this summer. And the lady goes, oh, send them to Daly City programs. They're just really good and the cheapest ones around.
That is the absolute truth.
And, and the other lady says, really? Are they good? Oh, they're fabulous. I almost wanted to yank that curtain back and introduce myself, but I didn't. But the word's definitely out in San Francisco that for, for those kind of programs, this is the place you want to come.
And, and one thing I'll add too, that's been talked about.
Even at the, even at the non-resident level.
For resident, non-resident. And our aquatics lessons, which are fully impacted, I mean, every spot is generally taken. The way we addressed giving the Daly City folks advantage, we have Daly City residents get to register for swim lessons a day before the rest of the world. And that way, we ensure that the Daly City kids who want to get into our programs have a spot. And if there's anything left over, the following day, we get people from San Francisco and, you know, Brisbane, Pacifico, as far away as San Mateo. But we do offer discounted rates for the Daly City residents in, in all of our aquatics programs. And I guess it depends what way you look at it. Is it an incentive for the Daly City or is it a disincentive, disincentive for non-residents? It kind of comes out the same.
And still, these, even at these prices, we're not getting full recovery.
No, we're not, we're not.
Not even close.
I think-
When you look at maintenance of the building, custodial services, the roof repairs, the, all that.
I think councilmember Sylvester was alluding to it earlier when he mentioned, because when we look at this, the only thing that, and you have to really look at it, is that there's a fee if you are a resident outside. And you made that very clear. But if you were to just look at the current fees or the proposed fees, it's just basically, just in general, there's no, if I was a resident, just looking at it, it's just pretty much the same, except for that one-time fee that you're raising to $100. And so, has there been an analysis around looking at particularly providing a resident fee and then, and, and outside, if you're a non-resident?
I, I think we're talking semantics. I mean, it is, it is a discount for Daly City residents. You're paying lower than everybody outside. You want to lower that further and raise the non-resident? I'm a little confused.
So what about this? What if you?
I mean, yes, there is a fee. I, I get it. And I know you're saying semantics. I see that. I see that there is an extra charge, but still dependent on how many, how many hours they use it, use it or whatnot. I, I see what you're saying, that there is a fee if you're a non-resident. I'm just saying if there is, you know, just another, I don't know.
So instead of a flat fee, make that non-resident fee, an hourly fee?
Or maybe in the advertising of these fees, that the rentals be listed as Daly City resident discounted fees, and then an asterisk that says, non-residents will pay an additional whatever. Because you're talking a little bit about how it appears to the public, as I recall the beginning of your, of your comment. So maybe it's just a way that we present it to the public. Same fees is just that you label them as these are Daly City resident fees, non-residents will pay an additional whatever, asterisk at the bottom, which sort of highlights the concept of residents getting a discount. I don't know. It is just semantics, but it might be, you know.
Through, through the chair, if I might, Madam Mayor, members of the council, one of the things that I think that you need to consider in all of this is the fact that these fees are not arbitrarily put together to, they are intended to cover the city's costs for maintenance of these facilities, for, for replacement of furnishings and for a variety of other things that, that we need to recoup the funds necessary to maintain these facilities. Even with these fees, we are not covering 100% the city's cost for maintaining these facilities. So the fees that were established are established recognizing that the public already, our residents in Daly City, the public already pay taxes. And so they're already contributing towards the cost of those facilities. And with that in mind, these fees, which do not collect 100% of what the true cost is to maintain facilities, recognize that we are also getting revenue from other sources. So that is the discounted rate. If we were to charge even to residents the full cost to maintain those facilities, these numbers would be much higher. We're not doing that. Collecting an additional fee for outside residents, we can attach an outside resident fee to every one of those. And whether or not we'll get people from the outside coming in to rent or not, and maybe we'll lose revenue from outside use, we certainly can do that. But these numbers are the baseline that it takes for us to maintain our facilities. And it's still not covering it 100%. So if you start reducing these fees, then think back or think forward because we haven't got to the budget yet. Think back to what we've talked about during the budget hearings about our costs for maintaining facilities and how we are running a deficit in those areas. These numbers and these adjustments that are being proposed tonight are only intended to help move us up closer in the direction of being able to recoup more of our costs for maintaining facilities. And so it's really important that we bear that in mind, that this is, these are not fees that are collecting 100% of the city's cost for these operations, for these programs and services.
I don't know. I mean, my problem is that it does seem- I mean, my problem is that it does seem in some of these categories arbitrary, and it is out of convenience and simplicity. So I don't, I don't think that's fair. And secondly, it doesn't make sense to me that you would increase fees, for example, on Lawson Hall, when basically it is a dilapidated place that, it's not a very attractive place, but yet there are people in this community who depend on Lawson Hall as their center of gathering. And so.
But the seniors don't pay.
But I just, I don't, and then I see a spot like the Jamona Pool, who is doing phenomenally well, where if we want to recover some costs, maybe that's the place that we should be increasing the fees. And we're not even proposing that. So I'm not, it doesn't make sense to me. And then I hear things like Camp Unity is leaving.
But they're not renting us.
So I'm just, I'm not, you can make the arguments you want, and I'm just outlining my uneasiness with some of these rates that are being proposed. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah.
But no proposal.
Well, of course, there's an understanding that there's some rationale to creating the increases, and there is, you know, obviously some connection. But I feel that, yeah, if it is a way to ensure that there is some sort of, like Daly City residents, yes, you've mentioned there is a discount because we charge others that live elsewhere. I see, I think I go with what Councilmember Sylvester mentioned, like raising the Geller Park Clubhouse from 85 to 110 is something that I can't agree with. I can see that raised about $10, similarly to what the other War Memorial, I mean, but from 85 to 110. I mean, you know, for someone that has been utilizing that, whether they're a resident to see that jump, I mean, it's, you know, these are families or individuals that utilize the space and they may live in Daly City. There is definitely a crunch in what's going on in the Bay Area around, you know, just stretching their dollars because of, you know, what's happening in the Bay Area. For me, I definitely understand that, you know, there's reasons to obtain and we must maintain our facilities, but there's also, looking at this, there needs to be some sort of rate increases that are more reasonable than just, when I look at this whole portion right here, that's raised 110 an hour, I can go with the 85 going to 95.
Is that a proposal? I don't know about you guys, but I'm ready to vote.
We can't because we're still in public hearing.
Yeah, but we can end that.
Yeah, but we're still at public hearing at the moment, and we still have another card, so. Ms. Pamela Digivani.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I want to speak to the, because I know you guys are concerned about the equitable issue. And to use Camp Unity is only because I'm using it as an example of like, how do we decide? How do you decide which nonprofit that serves our youth? And who gets, how do they choose which one is a place that we find a place for them? Not have them to go to CSM. Maybe, I know that we do nonprofits and they get charged a dollar or whatever. You know, these are our diversity that we don't want to leave our area. And we celebrate the idea that they're even here in Daly City, and the numbers are growing, and we need the youth to stay together. And all that does is bridge the families apart. And I know that, and what I know from this council, they never want to split families apart and have them in different areas and different cities because of the travel. They want to be in Daly City. Because this is the city that celebrates and respects the diversity. And we want to continue that. And if we could even like, our Pacific Islanders, they struggle just like other diverse groups, and we can lessen that burden on them if we can find them a place. And the other thing is, is that at the Jefferson Elementary School District, it was brought to my attention that I know that it's the Daly City students that are served by, for our fee. But there's a different fee being charged for Ben Franklin and Garden Village because they're in Broadmoor.
Yeah, they're not.
And unincorporated Broadmoor. But at the same token, our Jefferson Elementary School District is a part of that. So how do we figure that out? How do we make sure that that's equitable? Because they are, when we speak of our Daly City, but at the same time, they are part of our elementary school district, albeit in unincorporated Broadmoor with Ben Franklin and Garden Village. So I think that that needs to be something with thought I would ask, keep that mindful as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
So I'm wondering if the council has, if there's, perhaps what we can do is direct staff to come up with an adjusted schedule?
Let's just do it.
Or we can vote on this now, and my vote's going to be no, so.
I mean, earlier, that's why I asked, to see whether or not there was a way to see, yeah, if there could be an adjusted schedule or also just an analysis. I'm sure it's around what is the upkeep of the facilities? What, you know, how could we provide just more for our residents and then see how that can be captured? Because, you know, yes, mentioned earlier, it may not be up to cost, but our residents have provided the resources around taxes also in the same manner. And, yeah, I'd like to, I can't, yeah, I'd like to see like a further look within the schedule to see how we could do that.
Do you want to close? Are we going to close the hearing now, or?
So at this moment, I have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we accept the new fee schedule with these changes. The Lawson Hall would be changed up to the category of the Larkham Clubhouse. So it would be moving from $75 an hour to $85 an hour. And that the Geller Park Clubhouse at $85 and the Merced Room at $85 be moved to, you said $100 would be acceptable to you? Mayor, was that acceptable to you?
No, I had stated 95.
95? Okay, move it up to 95. And then let's move forward with this, with those specific changes. I give up.
Okay.
We're going to waste our time. Staff time. This is ridiculous.
At this point, there is no second, so.
Make a motion that we continue this item for further discussion and that we direct the director to perhaps propose another revised fee schedule, based on the comments you received here.
Yes, seek clarification. Are we still talking about aquatics and the after-school program or just the facility?
What you've heard here, what the discussion.
It seems like most of the discussion has been, I'm wondering, would it be possible to bring the facility rental piece separate on its own?
No, I think we should take it all together. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion with a comment once we can get to that point.
This is crazy.
Okay. At this.
Open for discussion now?
At this point, we are open for discussion.
It was not clear to me, and I am absolutely positive that it was not clear to Mr. Curran exactly what you want him to do. So for all of us here, those at home and staff, can you be more specific about the areas that you want him to pursue information on? Is the after-school program acceptable as it is, or does he need to do more there? There were really no comments on that. What about the, if you could just go through the chart here and look.
No, I'm not going to go through the chart. I think the record speaks for itself. I think.
What record?
Mr. Curran has heard all our comments, and I trust that he will be able to decipher them and put together a report reflecting what we are all concerned about.
Okay. Do you, oh, this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. You're asking staff to use valuable time in a program that has had so much staff cut.
I'm asking staff to do their job.
If you can't agree on a single thing out of this entire report that has been meticulously created, there is nothing that you can say, "We are going to, this is okay, and we're going to move on. We're going to ask him to do more work on the areas of concern." But I am a relatively intelligent person, and I have no idea where you need, where you're feeling you need more discussion and more information. So if you could just, please do, just go through the list of things that you want to have him do. I just can't see wasting staff time and then have it be something that you weren't interested in. And it's not clear, certainly, that it's not clear to the people in the audience that, it is not clear exactly what you want. So if you would, please, just take a deep breath and give a little bit of direction, instead of just saying, "Well, you've heard it enough, and now you know what to do." Because he doesn't know what to do. Is it possible that any of you could give him some specific direction?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Sylvester.
The comment I'm about to make is not going to be subject for debate. This is a comment. I realize that this city is in a financial deficit at this time. We are far beyond getting blood from a turnip. We just don't have it. At the same time, we have to come to a happy medium. And Daly City should not be the one solely responsible for trying to solve this issue of this deficit. I believe in a collaboration with schools. They have fields as well. Why can't we all work together? With that being said, what I am asking of staff is full and complete transparency, which I do not have at this particular time. For instance, the last time rates were raised was back in 2011. Well, what took it so long to all of a sudden want to raise it all of a sudden now? So what I would like to see is a comparison of what our neighboring cities charge. Pacifica, San Bruno, South San Francisco, and at least I have something here in front of me to gauge as to whether we have been paying or charging our residents less than what they should have been charged. I need to see this information so that it can help me make a decision, taking into account our deficit, taking into account the many community programs that we have in Daly City. That is first and foremost. You mentioned the area of semantics before about Daly City residents and the discount. Well, if that is the discount, it needs to be stated as the discount. If you are not a Daly City resident, you will be paying this amount. All I see is a $75 fee to be tacked on. Perception is the key, ladies and gentlemen. Our Daly City residents should have top priority, but at the same time, if the rates would have increased every year or every other year, like the way we look at the budget, then maybe this would not be a tough nut to crack after seven or eight years. These prices are probably still too low. But if you give me some information, like a comparison that says, "Whoa, you know what? We are very low." And that's something that we're going to have to deal with later. So I'm asking staff to provide me information from other cities within close jurisdictions as to what they charge for the rentals, and we go from there. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Also, with that, I'd like to also see, and then maybe with what his request was, around the last time, you mentioned when increases were. And I know you said they increased different times, but we should have that analysis from the beginning. So I think we've provided some clarity, and now I'll call the question. Okay, all in favor?
Is it roll call or is it?
Roll call.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
Sure.
Aren't you going to ask for the noes?
Any noes? Any abstentions?
No abstentions, and I vote no.
Okay, moving on. So moving on to approval of benefit assessments for Linda Vista area for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Staff member Chu?
Joseph, I am so sorry this happened.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is the approval of the benefit assessments for Linda Vista area for fiscal year 2018, 2019. In the early 1990s, the city council established the Linda Vista Benefit Assessment District. That district is divided into two sub-drain areas. We have the Bay Ridge Basin, and we also have the Linda Vista Basin. The Bay Ridge Basin serves 177 lots, and the Linda Vista Basin area serves 176 lots. The district was formed so that the public works maintenance staff can maintain the storm drain detention basins that is associated with these subdivisions. They also maintain the storm drain pipes in the right-of-way, fencing, pathways, landscaping, and other minor facilities. Our maintenance staff conducts a quarterly inspection of these facilities, and they also perform needed maintenance and repairs as required from those assessments. The proposed assessment for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 is $151.13 for the Linda Vista Basin and $146.00 for the Bay Ridge Basin. These assessments are the same as what they were the previous fiscal year in 2017, 18, so there is no proposed increase. The proposed assessments would generate revenue in the amount of $44,380.30. The residents have been informed via notice and mailings in regards to the proposed assessments, and also of the public hearing date for today. This is a yearly request to the council, because this is proposed to be collected through the county tax roll. And so the county does need council approval for the proposed assessment. Staff is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing and approve the Linda Vista area engineer's report and the benefit assessments for fiscal year 2018 and 19. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. At this point, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Chu? Councilmember Sylvester.
Mr. Chu, thank you very much. I just want to reiterate what you made mention, and this is a yearly assessment. It comes up every year.
That's correct.
So there's no time in between where the residents of Linda Vista can be hit with a big increase, because you come every year.
That's correct. It comes every year for council approval before we put it on the tax roll.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. At this point, I have a motion to open the hearing. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. We do not have any cards at this moment, so I have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Do we have, can we call the question for a resolution of approving the benefit assessment for Linda Vista area fiscal year 2018 and 2019?
So moved. Oh, second?
Okay. Adoption by roll call, so. All, can we go through? Roll call vote.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item 11, developer selection and authorization to prepare an agreement to negotiate exclusively for Jennifer Sarah Boulevard and Westlake Avenue, Daly City, California, Site Number One. We have Ms. Mothershead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Long overdue, but we're pleased to present you with the opportunity to select a developer for the former redevelopment parcel located on Huniper Sarah Boulevard at Westlake Avenue. As you recall from previous presentations, this particular development site is bisected by Westlake Avenue, so there's a northern portion and a southern portion. Back in March of last year, the city released a request of, for qualifications to the development community for all of our development sites. And we received responses for each of the three. In July and August of last year, the City Council had the opportunity to interview the developers. If you may recall, for this particular development site, we only had one developer submit their qualifications for the site, and that was Duggan's Mortuary. On August 21st, the council did direct Duggan's to move forward through the request for proposal stage, which was a more specific call for details of the development proposal. Duggan's did, at the time, submit a timely response. They submitted an RFP. However, as they were preparing that RFP, they were coming to realize that the cost of developing the parking for their proposed facility, which was about 52,000 square feet, it was including event space, retail, and office. To provide the parking for that, they were going to have to go subterranean, and the cost of that was very expensive. So they were looking at a possibility of removing a level of the subterranean parking to the development piece across the street. However, that kind of carved up the spot, and so they wanted to look at potential partner alternatives to get a developer for the southern piece. And so they kind of went back to the drawing board. And at that, at that time, staff had presented that that possibility had happened and that an extension be granted to Duggan's. So since that time, Duggan's has been doing quite a bit of work. They found a partner with Thunder Village Properties. Thunder Village reached out to Duggan's and said that they were interested in what would essentially be the remainder of the development site. And they are proposing a five-story auto dealership and service center for luxury vehicles. In the proposal that was submitted, you'll see a description of the, their development concept. It's on page 10 of the RFP, which was attached to your staff report. But essentially, they're looking to build a five-level, 200,000 to 250,000 square-foot auto facility. Everything is self-contained, so this wouldn't be exterior storage of vehicles. The dealership that they're looking to move in has a track record of $100 million in retail sales, so this would be great economic benefit to the city, should this move forward. So with that, there's also a series of deal points that are put in the staff report. They're looking at a purchase price of $60 per square foot. The reason it's a square foot basis right now is because there does need to be some surveying of the site, so we don't have an exact square footage. But you're looking at somewhere between $6.5 to $7 million for a purchase price of both pieces. So with that, staff is recommending that Duggan's and Thunder Village be selected as the developer. If they are selected, we also ask that the council authorize staff to work with the development team to prepare an agreement to negotiate exclusively. We would, of course, bring that agreement back to the council. So this is just to work with them on that, select them as the developer, and then come back to the council for the, for the ENA. With that, that concludes my presentation. The development team is here, if there's any specific questions at their development proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mothershead. At this point, I'm opening up to any comments or questions from my colleagues.
I have one. Who determined the price of $60 per square foot? How, did we have an appraisal? How was that developed?
The, the price is based on what the development team is submitting. It's what they are proposing. So what they're proposing does not mean that is the sales price. There would be an appraisal that would have to be done, and that's part of the negotiations that would occur between the city and the development team. But this is just their sort of offer, their first offer to us.
So, tell me a little bit more about the, so it's, it's, is it a new car dealership? Entirely new car?
Yes, and the development team's here, so they probably can do the better job of presenting it, but it is my understanding that it's new vehicles. Yes.
Please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council, and staff. Thank you very much. I wanted to introduce Kevin Louie from Thunder Village Properties. And luckily, Cosmont, the consultant that the city hired, brought Kevin to us and thought there would be a really good partnership for what, our needs were only for north of Westlake Avenue at that time. And Kevin and his company, their needs, the site on the south side of Westlake Avenue was ideal for what they needed. And Cosmont brought us together. We've had several meetings. We've got a great relationship. And I, I think that the patience that we have had here on this particular development is, will really pay off quite well for the city. I'd like Kevin to tell you the, the dealership that has approached us here.
Yeah, it's a current dealership based in San Francisco, British Motor Cars, which carries the brands Jaguar and Land Rover.
So is it, I, I mean, I think I've seen BMC. It's, it seems to be like a lot of high-end-
Correct.
-kind of cars, but I wasn't certain if they were used cars or brand-new.
Predominantly brand-new, but they do have used cars on site.
Okay. And then the concept that you have, so I understand, so how many stories is it?
It's five stories.
Okay.
Two, two stories of showroom, one story of service, and two stories of storage.
Is, is the, like I noticed in City Toyota, they have cars parked in their garage where you could see it on display on the, on the top floor. Is that the kind of concept you have, where you're going to be showing cars from the building itself?
I believe so, but that's going to be up to the tenant to design the building to their needs. I can't really speak for that yet.
I see. Okay.
Through the mayor, so what, if the developer is selected, there's a series of entitlements that would need to be gone through, design review, things of that nature. So at this point, the, the plans that are submitted are very conceptual in nature, that just show kind of general massing and a general architectural concept. But obviously, there'd be a lot more refinement that would have to be done throughout the process.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay. Okay.
So I, I think what we're asking for is the exclusive right to negotiate with Kevin and ourselves to go forward. It's not, no deal set in stone or anything, it's just that we can sit down and talk numbers and such.
Madam Mayor, if I may. A lot of things are coming to Daly City, and one of our priorities is the community. Now, I know, Mr. Duggan, in, in modifying your new campus to be, you have provided supposedly a community room in retail on JSI. Proposed, you know. I would hope that this would continue on with BMC to think about the community as well, and not just coming in here to sell cars, but, you know, what can they do for the community? Help us out. Okay? So, just some, some food for thought. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I know that this is really around deciding for an exclusive negotiation or a way to just be able to move forward. But for me, I think, I know this is all very conceptual. And design is further down the line. But what we do put on that lot, because we have extremely, we don't have a lot of land anymore. And for me, it, it's important also to ensure that whatever design that happens is also providing the aesthetics for our community, and also just making sure that it is something that, I don't know, you can provide some sort of open space around the building or whatnot. But I know that it's, you know, that you're a private building for the use of the dealership, but I think it's these, these are, we don't have a lot of land left, and so it's important to see what we can work with down the line. I think that's what Councilmember Sylvester was talking about, like how can we work together?
That, that's noted, and at the appropriate time when our tenant gets their design team engaged with the city. Better details can flesh out on that.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other questions, I, I do have one question, and this is just to our staff at the, at this time. When we did look at releasing RFP, it was around an office, kind of the commercial space, right? And so, did we ever, and this is just a question for staff, did we ever look at that site to be a hotel site?
No. So, we have the piece to the north. So essentially, the, the hotel piece where DC Station is currently, and this development site, was all zoned as part of PD 54. That was back in the Big Pacific Plaza rezon. And so at the time, the, the, the piece to the north was identified as the hotel piece. When we marketed the site, we simply marketed it for what the site was zoned for. The development community, obviously knowing that if they're going to change the zoning, there's some risk with that. So we've only looked at it as what it was zoned for by the council in 1999, and that's how it was marketed.
Okay. So, which was zoned for commercial usage?
Yeah, so this particular site, what it was initially entitled for was the parking structure on the north side would have been extended to provide parking, and then across Westlake Avenue to the south, it was entitled for 270,000 square-foot office that would utilize the parking across the street. That zoning was clear in the marketing materials, and when that was put out to the development community, we did not have a single office proposal. In fact, Duggan's was the only proposal that we received for the site.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? If none-
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that the City Council approve the selection of Duggan's Sierra Mortuary and Sierra Enterprises Corporation, along with Thunder Village Properties LLC, to engage with staff in agreement to negotiate exclusively, otherwise known as the ANE, with the selected developer, as mentioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I think this is adoption by roll call?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Mothershead. Thank you.
Item number 12, the adoption of the comprehensive biannual operating and capital budget for fiscal years 2019 and 2020. All right. So now we have the adoption of fiscal years 2019 and 2020, the comprehensive biannual operating and capital budget. And we have Ms. Martell.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we've brought to you for final action the proposed fiscal year 2019 and 2020 comprehensive biennial operating budget and the capital budget. The information that is contained in the proposed budget, we have reviewed with you extensively over the last several weeks with departmental presentations. And tonight, we're going to review for you, and those who are here or who are watching at home, what the proposed budget contains in its final form, which is being requested that you adopt tonight. So we're going to start with a review of the citywide expenditures and the budget summary. Then we were, are going to outline several proposed changes to the budget from when we first discussed it with you. Then we'll go through the general fund summary and the reserve. And then we will look at, as requested, the general fund historical revenues and expenditures. Review your priorities is outlined in the budget and with the revisions that you gave us at the last meeting. And then we'll conclude with hopefully action to accept the proposed budget and to adopt it. So with that, Mr. Chu?
Good evening, council. This table summarizes fiscal year 2019 proposed budget by department. The first column is the general fund proposed budget. Total general fund for fiscal year 2019 is at $85.7 million. Since the budget was presented to the council on April 23rd, three additional firefighter positions are added to the fire department budget. Total budget of the fire department increased by around $500,000 from $19.5 million to the $20 million. I was going to show you more detail in the next few slides. The second column is the proposed budget for the other funds. This included internal service fund- This included internal service fund, gas test, enterprise fund, and our project at 83.1 million. And a big chunk of this is belong to the water and wastewater fund here. And the next column here is the CIP fund at 18.3 million. The last column is the total proposed budget for the city at 187.1 million for fiscal year This table summarizes the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget by department. Total budget for the CIP, including the CIP, is at 191.7 million. General fund budget increased by around 4.5 million to 90.2 million in fiscal year 2020. The increase is mainly due to increase in the cow purse employee contribution salary and benefit adjustment. Other funds decreased by $800,000 to 82.2 million. Now we look at the fiscal year 2019 and 2020 proposed budget changes. This table provides an overview of the proposed budget changes since the council reviewed the budget on April 23rd. The final budget include the funding of three additional firefighter position from the general fund reserve to address staffing shortage due to multiple workers compensation cases in the fire department. In fiscal year 2019, $510,000 will be transferred from the general fund reserve. And for fiscal year 2020, $570,000 will be transferred from the general fund reserve to fund the three firefighter position. It is anticipated that there'll be retirement in the fire department. That will reduce the cost of over staffing. However, there's no guarantee that the retirement will occur, and the city will run the risk at, run at the risk of incurring greater operating costs in the future. Other changes to the general fund budget include the transfer of a senior management analyst position in the public work department from the general fund to the CIP. Another miscellaneous transfer of around $30,000 between the general fund and the CIP. The table on the top shows the adjustment to the C, to the capital project fund include the transfer of a senior management analyst from the general fund to the CIP, and also $10,000 miscellaneous adjustment to the capital project. The table below shows $70,000 adjustment to the wastewater fund. Now we look at the general fund summary. This table shows the general fund revenue and expenditure for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Project revenue for fiscal year 2019 is at 81 million, and the project expenditure is 85.7 million, resulting in a deficit of 4.7 million. In fiscal year 2020, the project deficit is 6 million. And it's very important to look at the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019 and 2020 already include 1.5 million reduction from the general fund department in each fiscal year. So for the two year, 3 million has already been reduced from the general fund expenditure. In order to balance the budget, 4.7 million will be transferred from the general fund reserve in fiscal year 2019. And 6 million will be transferred from the general fund reserve in 2020 to balance the Now we look at the general fund reserve. The city policy is to maintain an aside fund balance equal to 15% of budget expenditure. In fiscal year 2019, the aside fund balance will decrease to 18.1 million or 21% of the general fund reserve after using 4.7 million to balance the budget. In the second year of the budget, the general fund reserve will be decreased to 12.1 million or 13.4% after using 6 million to balance the budget. Another way to look at the general fund reserve is how many months of operating revenue, operating reserve we have in the bank to keep the city operate. The GFOA recommends the general fund government maintain a general fund unrestricted fund balance of no less than two months of operating revenue or expenditure. The city general fund spend an average of around 7 million per month to pay for employees' salary and benefit and other operating expense. In fiscal year 2019, the general fund reserve will equivalent to two and a half months of operating expense. In other words, around 80 days of operating reserve. And in the second year of the budget, the general fund reserve will drop to 1.6 months or 50 days of operating reserve. Now we look at the general fund historical revenue expenditure between fiscal year 2009 and 2017. This table shows the historical general fund net revenue between fiscal year 2009 and 2017. Since the housing market collapsed in fiscal year 2008, the general fund net revenue were below the budget in fiscal year 2009, 2010, and again in 2013 and in 2014. And the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 revenue include 13.8 million and 7.7 million non-spanable, non-receivable from the former redevelopment agency. It's right here. The 13.8 and the 7.7 here, and the 4.6 here. And the non-receivable is categorized as non-spanable fund balance and cannot be appropriate until cash is received from the state. This table, we know, shows the historical general fund net expenditure between fiscal year 2009 and 2017. In fiscal year 2012, general fund expenditure were 10.1 million above the budget. This is still should write off of 10.2 million loan to the former redevelopment agency. And between fiscal year 2014 and 2016, general fund net expenditure are higher than the budget revenue, budget expenditure due to salary adjustment, increasing cow purse contribution, overtime, and termination pay. Now I turn over to city manager to present the city council priority based on the feedback from the council meeting.
So at our last session, we received final direction from the council on the budget. Council wanted to revisit your priorities, and so we have presented what we believe is what you have now determined should be your priorities going forward. And I just want to review them. Again, this will be your opportunity, if there's any last changes that you would like to make to them. Overarching in the discussion that the council had on your priorities is the fact that all the priorities are equally important and that they're not numbered in order, but that they are all of equal importance. So among those priorities are community and civic support, which involves engaging and educating the community to participate in civic affairs and to provide input on public policy concerns in the city. The second is government operations, which is, the priority is to continue to identify opportunities for great, greater cost effectiveness and efficiency in all departments and through shared services with, potential shared services with other local agencies. The third is the economic development and revenue enhancement to ensure long-term fiscal The priority is to promote a diverse economic base through directed larger business development in the community, as well as to develop a citywide economic development strategy and plan to identify new opportunities for expanding the economic base. On this particular priority, the director of economic and community development and I have looked into the cost for working with Cosmont and Associates on the economic development strategy and plan that I really do believe that you will need to go forward if you're going to hire an economic development specialist in the, in the future, to provide them with a roadmap of opportunities for expanded economic development. The cost of that study is somewhere in the area, in the range of about $36,000. So those funds have not been budgeted as of this time, but they certainly could be taken from reserves if the council elects to go forward with, with that kind of an economic development plan. The next priority is public safety to ensure adequate public safety resources and reinforce a sense of community and personal safety. The next priority is land use to enhance the physical development of the community and ensure that it's consistent with sound environmental and other land use policies. In alignment with land use would be affordable housing and the need to continue to develop quality affordable housing at all income levels to combat rising home prices. The next priority is transportation and traffic improvements, which includes enhancing the transportation network and reducing traffic congestion, expanding the network of bike lanes and walking lanes for community health and recreation, and to enhance pedestrian-oriented improvements citywide. Next is infrastructure and ensuring that we allocate additional resources going forward to maintain quality infrastructure throughout the community. And finally, leisure services, which is to provide a variety of opportunities for community participation in recreation, library, cultural, and others structured, as well as passive leisure time activities for residents in the community. So those are the priorities as we heard the council articulate them. If there's any changes, additions, deletions that you'd like to make, now would be your time to, to convey that.
Any comments or questions? I think we've captured many of our comments around the priorities. So thank you, Ms. Martel. Any other comments or questions around the budget? Okay. Yeah? Oh, council member Sylvester.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the comprehensive biannual operating capital budget for fiscal years 2019 and 2020.
Second. Before there's a final vote, I will take the opportunity to just finish up the report and provide some final comments for you. As I mentioned to you while we were putting the budget together, while we had the budget hearings with you, this has been one of the most difficult budgets that we've had to put together. In large measure, it's been one of the most difficult budgets because we are relying so heavily on reserves to balance the budget. In the summary that the finance director provided for you about the use of general fund reserves to balance the budget, it leaves this city precariously close to, in the future, not having sufficient reserves to maintain operations beyond about a month and a half of our expenses. That is the most precarious situation we have been in financially is, for as long as I can remember. We have built into this budget what I, what I think is a very, very modest level of services. And even so, the expenses of the city far exceed the revenue that we are bringing in. And the reliance on the general fund reserve to continue to balance the budget is something that we will talk about, and we will be bringing in our consultant, our financial consultant from Public Financial Management to talk about our long-term financial sustainability strategy. We cannot continue to operate in this way because we will burn through the rest of the reserves and there will be nothing left. Hopefully, with development on the horizon, some of which you heard about tonight in approving a future development agreement, there are opportunities. But even those opportunities that, to generate new revenues with a new hotel and potentially a new auto dealership and an expansion of Duggan's services in this, in the community, those revenues will not immediately begin to replenish the general fund reserve in the amounts that we have been relying on in recent years. We have the overarching costs of our pension rate increases. We have our overarching liabilities for retiree health that are unfunded, and all of those contribute to the financial condition of the city at the present time. And while we have been able to balance the budget, we are maintaining modest services throughout the community. We continue to look for areas to increase revenue. But increasing revenue, you know, harkening back to the earlier discussion about an increase in recreation fees, is going to rely on the public to have to pay more for services. And if they don't, then you're going to burn through whatever is left in the reserves. And I would suggest to you that that is not the direction that Daly City can continue in, into the future. And when we bring in the financial consultant next month, we intended to bring in tonight, but he was not available, but when we bring him in next month, you'll see that the strategies that we have tried to employ to reduce the structural deficit are not being met. And they're not being met because of the increasing personnel costs related to, in part, labor negotiations, in part, the rise in PERS rate increases, and undeniably, the unfunded liability for retiree health. Those are the most expensive parts of this budget are the labor costs. And unless we get those under control, the city is going to continue in the future to drain through the reserves in a very, very dangerous way moving forward. We've balanced it. I feel secure with what we have said will, in this budget document, will be revenue growth. But even with the revenue growth, the very optimistic revenue growth that we have included in this budget, it doesn't match the expenditure growth. And so that is something that this council and your future city manager and the executive management staff are going to be grappling with because this budget was the most difficult, and it is, I believe, if you look back in any of the budgets over the last 10 years or longer, it is one that has relied very, very heavily on general fund reserves, which leaves us in a very, very shaky situation going forward unless we see amazing new revenue growth in some future areas that we're not aware of at the present time. But we'll talk more at the next meeting when our consultant is here about the strategies that are going to have to align with the adoption of this budget if, in the next two years, the council is going to be able to get our revenues and expenditures back in line so that you will not have to continue to reserve, to rely on the use of general fund reserves that are being diminished very rapidly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martel, for your comments and all your work on the budget this year with this, and I appreciate it. I, I, I think we know where we're at. I think what council is looking towards is, hopefully, as mentioned, as you mentioned, that as we move forward, that these pieces such as the development, hotel tax, the raise in business license... development, hotel tax, the raise in business license tax, all of these could work together. And as mentioned before, that, and I think we're moving towards that, is looking at a strong kind of economic development plan so that as we look ahead, we are combating the situation that we are faced with today. I, I think that we definitely need to look far ahead and create a plan. We have some moving parts that are happening already, which is great, as we talked about. There are developments on the horizon, and I think, you know, with the economic development plan, looking forward, you know, we need to continue to help our small businesses and really create this robust plan to ensure that, we need all aspects. We need to move forward with our hotel tax, we also, you know, need to also see how we can see our small businesses continue to thrive. I mean, I know that you've mentioned where really the top three of our sales tax are stemming from, is the restaurant, retail, and automobiles. And if we need to look at other ways that we ensure that people come to Daly City, you know, we have a beautiful city, we have amazing restaurants, and to continue to look in that direction, and not only in large developments, but also the small economic, business sector of our local community. And I think that I'm really looking forward to seeing what work could be done around having a strategic, a strategic plan of action around what we can do for our community. Of course, you know, there, there is rising costs that are associated with what we have provided for our communities, and we're looking at that, to balance that and ensure that we have a thriving Daly City community. But I have hope that with the work together with staff and my colleagues, that we, we do move forward with a plan of action, re-engaging and looking at the mission urban development plan that was done years ago, looking at opportunities that we may have at the Bay Shore area, you know, I, you know, looking at possibilities that we may have not even seen prior. You know, we are a resilient community, and I have high hopes that we'll forge ahead. But thank you so much for your service and for your, your work on this.
All right. Good job.
Oh, yeah.
You had a motion.
Okay. So, roll call, please.
Oh, wait a second. Are we open for discussion now?
Okay, sure.
There's one first and a second?
Sure.
Before we vote, I want to share that I have extremely deep concerns about continuing to be dependent on our reserves. We have a structural deficit that is not new, it is a continuing structural deficit. I voted against the 6% raises across the board for all staff, not because I'm a stingy person, or I don't think the staff deserves it, but because I fear that the decisions that my colleagues made to pass that will bring this city closer to the brink of bankruptcy, will bring us closer to a state takeover, when those very employees' jobs will be at risk. If the state takes over, they just decide what's going to be cut, and the city loses control over that. I am very concerned about that. Every economist worldwide has predicted that the market and the economy is going to crash again. Some of them say we are about a year and a half overdue, others are predicting it'll happen in the next year. It is never wise to live your life economically on best-case scenario. Things happen. I mean, look what's happened in Hawaii, I mean volcanoes happen, all sorts of negative things happen. You cannot live your life financially based on everything's going to be perfect, you have to plan for the crisis. The economic crisis is coming, and we are not planning for it. Decisions that have been made have put us in a dangerous situation. All that said, the decision has been made by my colleagues to give those raises, and I am not going to be the person who's going to vote no on a budget that would shut our city down. I will not say to our residents, because my colleagues, I believe, have made a bad decision, that we are going to stop providing you service. I'm not going to be the one to say to our employees, "I'm sorry, your check is not going to be in the mail." Because this has happened in the past, where actually Mr. Buena Ventura is one of the Council members, and Mr. Canepa was one, who the last time we had a serious conflict over the budget, just voted no, that would have shut Daly City down. Despite my concerns, I'm sharing them with you now, but I will vote to support this budget because I believe the residents of this city deserve their services, and the employees deserve their paychecks. But I am praying that the crisis does not come before we resolve the structural deficit, but I am extremely fearful that it will. Thank you.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. I, I do hope that as we move forward, as mentioned, we are in this predicament now, but looking ahead, we need to really work together around finding opportunities for our community and our city. And so, you know, I, I do have hope. I'm in a more optimistic state that we can, together with the talent that we have with our staff, that is the reason why we value them so greatly, because they are the ones that work very hard for our city. Some of them are also the very forefront of our city, that as we move forward, we find these opportunities that will bring our city forward. So thank you very much.
Moving on to our next agenda item, and thank you very much for your input, Ms. Chu. We are now moving on to item number 13, appropriate funds and award of construction contract for the 2018-2019 St. Francis Slurry Seal Project. We have Mr. Yen and Ms. Siffle.
Nope. Mr. Chu?
Oh, Mr. Chu.
Yes, it's going to be Mr. Chu. Good evening, honorable.
We're answering.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. Staff recommends that the City Council accept all responsive bids and award a construction contract to Graham contractors in the amount of $1,488,945 for the 2018-19 St. Francis Heights Slurry Seal Project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city. Staff further recommends that the City Council approve the design documents, affirm the SEQA categorization of categorical exemption, appropriate $1,210 of SB1 funds, $299,457.85 of Measure A funds, and authorize the transfer of $242,842.15 from the completed 2017-18 Bay Shore Slurry Seal Project to fully fund the project, excuse me, that was a lot. So, the 2018-19 St. Francis Slurry Seal Project proposes to slurry seal approximately 13.9 miles of streets in the St. Francis Heights neighborhood, as well as sections of Oriente Street and Otelia Street that were left out of last year's Bay Shore Slurry Seal Project. The project received three bids, they ranged from $1,488,945 to $1,747,954. The apparent low bidder, Graham Contractors of San Jose, California, has been in business since 1976. They have the required Class A license, and they successfully completed Daly City's 2016-17 Westlake Slurry Seal Project and last year's Bay Shore Slurry Seal Project. So, this year's engineers estimate is slightly higher than previous projects, and it's primarily due to an increased quantity of three-inch AC deep lifts, asphalt concrete deep lifts, as well as an increased cost in the materials in the current construction industry market. The other factor would be that we left out some streets from last year's Bay Shore Slurry Seal Project, and we're including them in this year's. So the estimated construction cost for the project is $1,712,300, which includes a 10% contingency, 5% construction inspection, and contract administration costs. An additional $40,000 is required to also complete the design of the project. This action will appropriate the 1.21 million of expected SB1 funds, or expected and anticipated SB1 funds, $299,457.85 of Measure A funds, and transfer $242,842.15 of unexpended funds from the Bay Shore Slurry Seal Project to fully fund the project. Staff is recommending the award of this contract ahead of the next fiscal year to take advantage of the construction season and avoid scheduling conflicts with the beginning of the next school year. Staff is available to answer any further questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your report, sir. This, this question might be a little complicated, but I'm going to fire away anyway. In the event that SB1 is repealed, do we have the funds to support this project?
So, in the case that SB1 funds is repealed, we do have Measure A funds, I believe, in, to compensate for this particular project. However, Mr. Chu would have a better understanding on this particular part?
Yeah, so if SB1 were to be repealed, it would most likely impact other future projects that we would have planned. This project, we've already received some SB1 money already.
Right.
The proposed SB1 repeal would impact future ones, and so this project, for the most part, would still have sufficient funds to, to complete the project.
So what I'm hearing, that we've already received some money already, but we didn't receive 1.2 million, did we? We only got about 800,000?
For the next year, we would have enough for the 1.2 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which brings me to the third paragraph on your staff report. Funding for the St. Francis area slurry seal was planned for the proposed 2018-19 fiscal year CIP budget. So what I'm hearing there is, we allocated that amount of money already in the budget. So, correct me if I'm wrong, is that taking into account the SB funds that we received? Or is it that we will have a surplus because we had allocated in the budget for that in absence of SB1?
So when SB1 came out, we came back to Council to update the budget to incorporate SB1 funds. And at that time, it was approximately about $600,000, $650,000 that was brought before Council in terms of appropriating those funds for this project. So, to answer your question, a portion of the SB1 funds has already come to Council for approval, about $650,000.
What I'm getting at is, are we going to have some extra money as a result of SB1, even though it's indicated in the budget that we have a shortfall?
Well, for, for SB1 funds, if this project is approved, we would be using next year's SB1 money to complete this project, and then that would use up all the SB1. But then we would, assuming SB1 doesn't get appealed, we would continue to get additional SB1 funds that we would propose for future projects.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from my colleagues? Seena? I have a motion to adopt the recommended action.
Second.
All in favor? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members.
Thank you.
At this point, we have our public appearances and oral communications. The first we have is Mr. Erwin Bonia. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Manalo and Council Members. My name is Erwin Bonia, I'm a resident here in Daly City at 31 Eaton Avenue. Been here almost my whole life, 20-plus years, and I stand before you as a Lyft and Uber driver, addressing the issuance of SB 182. This measure permits rideshare drivers to register in the town of their residence alone, rather than forcing them to carry a separate business license and pay annual fees for each city in which they work, such as San Francisco, Oakland, or San Jose. This measure was passed by Governor Brown in October 2017, and it was introduced by Senator Stephen Bradford from Gardena. Before this law was passed, so as you know, about 21,000 drivers were registered in San Francisco. And this 21,000 was out of the 45,000 that was determined to be driving in San Francisco alone. And that generated the city of San Francisco approximately $1.9 billion annually. That's a big number, because when you think about it, 21,000 drivers driving in around San Francisco is revenue for the city of San Francisco. But many of these drivers were not living in San Francisco, and I'm one of them. I heard, I hear a lot of talk about the city not having enough funds to meet its obligations, and it's, it's with humbleness that I stand for you, like, being a resident, it's hard to hear that as a resident, that you're paying taxes and still the city is not able to meet its obligations. In presenting this SB 182, I just want to be, I just want to ask, are you aware of that, about this, about this law? Because I think a lot of cities are not aware of it, and I know I'm out of time, but I wanted to just share with you that right now Daly City doesn't have an ability to allow people like me to pay a business license in San Francisco as a rideshare driver. There's no ordinance in your planning codes. The only, the closest thing I had was the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 17.36, Home Occupations, and it specifically says that ride-sharing is not permitted in San Francisco. All I'm asking from the City Council is to consider evaluating this as an additional source of revenue for the city. It allows me to be permitted to operate in Daly City, and it allows me an ability to be a business owner, if you will, operating legally in San Francisco and Daly City, because I'm a resident of Daly City. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any question?
That's okay. Thank you very much. We have Ms. Pamela Givani.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council Members. First, I'd like to say that National Police Week is the 13th through the 19th of our fallen officers, and if we could close tonight, and there are many of them that are fallen, and to honor the ones that we have. And it was a great gun buyback, and Sergeant Harrison, our chief, and all the officers that were out there, and to thank the Mayor and Councilmember Sylvester for being there, and especially Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, I know you couldn't be there because you're with your father, but I know that you had put forth an effort in this, and it continued, and not only did it continue, it flourished, and it was a big success. And there were, at nine o'clock, there were still cars all the way around the, waiting to, to even get in, they started a few minutes early. We got great media coverage from Con Four and all that, so our police department worked hard, and to take And to take that into consideration when we move forward, and if there are any monies we need to protect and have our firearm police and public services. I know that you guys, that's one of your biggest priorities. And we have a long ways to go on that one. And so, maybe, hopefully, I know that we can unfreeze those positions at any time. And also, thankfully, to the mayor for the HIP-B event that was put on, and that they said one out of a ten of the Asians that were in that room, there, I think it was over twenty-some. And it's sad to see and hear, and they showed a film, that those people did get tested. But knowing that they got tested, there could be a possibility that two in there could be infected. But if you could save one life in there after watching that film, it was very heartwarming, no matter what your ethnicity was. And because we have a lot of mixed in our community as well. And we, and to raise that awareness, I think we need to put forth that effort and keep it moving. It was pretty, pretty moving event. So, I thank you, and thank you very much for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marian Mann? Oops, sorry. You're welcome. Ms. Marian Mann.
I don't really like coming here this evening, but I made several people a promise that I would come and speak to you. I was not at the last council meeting because I was out of town. And when I got home, I was approached by several people concerning the situation where the bickering in the city council is becoming so apparent that people are getting tired of it. If you want to bicker, do it behind doors, you know? But when you're out here representing our city, you have to be professionals. You have to pretend to get along. I know I've been coming to this council for almost forty years, and I have never seen a council get this bad. I'm sorry. The public who watch the council meetings are not happy with you. You know, you, you have to, how do I say? Even pretend to get along, but show respect. Like, last time, I think there was something about one of the council members' appointees to the commission reappointment, and then there was just this big hassle where there was a difficulty between the commissioner and, and one of the council people. And it was very apparent. And of all the people that have talked to me, they were very, very offended. They did not elect you to behave this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marian Mann. We have Randy Wang?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Randy Wong. I work at Free Youth California. We're a public health-related nonprofit, have a lot of longstanding ties to Daly City. I'm here, you know, as part of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. And I know that Daly City City Council has supported so many initiatives that the, you know, County Tobacco Coalition really, you know, has, has brought forth.
I'm going to ask you to speak just a little louder, so people at home will be able to hear you.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to mention, you know, it's, I'm here to kind of renew your interest in, in this issue of smoke-free multi-unit housing, which I know that Daly City, as a city council, was kind of on the forefront in, in supporting, you know, back in twenty thirteen, the Daly City Council passed an ordinance that would protect people, especially the most vulnerable people, like seniors, you know, children, folks with asthma, from secondhand smoke in their apartment buildings. You know, like, in the middle of night, smoke rises from, you know, other parts of buildings, things like that. And at the time, it covered apartments, but not condos. And as far as I understand, at that time, there was an interest in the city council at addressing condos to be covered, but in a future year. And since then, I know the city council has tackled a variety of really excellent topics related to tobacco prevention and, and, you know, including pharmacies, sales, things like that, e-cigarette regulations. But also, in that time being, you know, other places in the county have also passed ordinances that have related to both smoke-free apartments and condos. So, the unincorporated parts of the county, you know, by the board supervisors, Brisbane, San Bruno, and South San Francisco have all passed ordinances that cover both apartments and condos. So, I'd love to talk with you about that in the future, someone from our coalition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sylvie Alvarez Lynch. It doesn't say it fully on here.
This, too, is in relation to the past performance of last, the last council meeting. In my opinion, due to Ray Buenaventura's continued lack of professionalism, ethical and decent social behavior, which has now reached a point whereby very successful, talented, educated, experienced persons, such as Pauline Fong Martinez, and most recently Charlie Lerico, will not be serving on Daly City commissions that would highly benefit from their knowledge and commitment. In my opinion, due to Ray Buenaventura's highly inflated ego, his outrageously immature and nasty public display of abuse of the public office he holds, many people remember his very public abusive and threatening behavior towards Pat Martel, the Daly City manager, at one of the council meetings, simply because she is a woman who is well-educated, intelligent, very experienced, and in position of authority. Buenaventura's continual irrational, illogical, egocentric, and abusive behavior does not serve the people of Daly City well. He is a divisive and negative force on this council. He does not condone anyone who does not cater to his ego. Ray is a liability. He should resign, before Daly City will need to defend him legally, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lynch. No other comments or public oral communications? Okay, I want to thank everyone who spoke. We're moving on to our next item, which is appointments of boards and commissions. Are there any appointments of boards or commissions at this time?
I have none.
Okay, seeing none. Moving on to reports for council committee. I, do you have a report for council committee?
No, I don't think there, there aren't any.
Actually, there were two meetings that I had attended. One with Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura. It was a meeting with City Ventures and City Toyota. At, at this point, we're hoping the two parties could come to a resolve. For those of you in public, you know, they had come to the council, and we had mentioned if there's any way that they can, the two businesses work together. So, that's an update. There is, at this point, a continuation of that meeting, and we'll see, we'll update the public in the future. Also, on April thirtieth, I did have a meeting with Councilmember Gengona and the staff around the water rate, our water rates. And so, at this point, we had staff present to us the need to increase our water rates. At this point, we are, we have not moved forward to bring this to the council. We need more data that's provided to the committee, and we'll be meeting, and then, once we do meet, we'll, we'll forward the information to the council and the public. Now, moving on to city council reports, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have any reports for city council.
I do, Madam Mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity. Past two weeks, I attended two meetings, and this is going to be very short. The first meeting is part of a committee that I'm a part of, and it's called the San Mateo County Event Center. There are plans to renovate the center, and it's going to take thirty years to do so. We're looking at building a hotel, office space, but still maintain that same ambiance that you come used to knowing when you go down to the San Mateo County. Obviously, it's for the benefit of all San Mateo County, and they're going to probably be asking every city to participate in some sort of assessment. Just letting you know, it's coming down the line, so you'll hear more about that later. The other meeting, Mosquito Vector Control District. I have been told that vector-borne diseases are on the rise. But Daly City is a little bit different and unique up in our area because when these diseases arise, Daly City gets it or is prone to it at a different part of the year than other cities. So, I'll keep you posted on that, but nothing to be alarmed about at this time. That is my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. I do, are there any other reports? I'll be, okay, moving on to let the public know that I was in attendance for the April twenty-six Spring for Youth event. It was really amazing to see our young people supported by a great organization, the Daly City Youth Health Center. And I remember being able to utilize their services when I was younger. There was a point where both my parents were laid off, and we had no health insurance. I remember going to the Daly City Youth Health Center. And to see them continue to thrive, have a new location in one of our areas, is, is great to see. And really, to hear the stories of these young people that are resilient and have overcome a lot of challenges was really inspiring. Also, on April twenty-eighth, I was able to stop by Tobias Elementary School, and they had their event Passport to the World Fair. It was pretty amazing to see how they had all of, kind of, the different parts of the world represented. And it, that's why they called it Passport to the World Fair. Also, that same day, I also was able to stop by Holy Angels for their Spring Annual Fair, which was also filled with all the youth and young people there. April thirtieth, with Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura, we joined our supervisor, David Canapa, who had provided emergency preparedness day at Skyline College in North County. Usually, they have this event in San Mateo County, further down around Redwood City, but it was his idea to have it closer, closer to North County. And so, it was really great to kind of see all of the parts around emergency preparedness. They had, you know, all, it was, it was important to learn, and something that, as earlier, I mean, we did have that mini earthquake. You know, these are the things that we need to prepare for. And I thought that was a successful event. On May second, it was mentioned earlier, we did have our Get It Moving Town Hall meeting, and it was located, and we had Councilmember Sylvester there, who participated, and a lot of our community members that really talked about what are the needs in Daly City. I think what amounted, and as Councilmember Sylvester mentioned, there are so different, so many different cities in San Mateo County. And in, from south of San Mateo to north, what was really valuable that we learned around our community members is around access to public transportation. And, you know, that was actually on the top of their list. I mean, yes, there is traffic, but I think, you know, the members of the community mentioned that we need to have more services and accessibility to, to public transportation. That's what we saw at the top of the list. And if you haven't, please sign on and put your input on the Get It Moving survey. Also, the Daly City Community Center hosted a women's series with electeds at Jefferson High School, where there were young people and community members that, who were interested in learning about public service. And so, that was, you know, at my old alma mater. So, it was nice to be in my old library. It was nostalgic, but also great to speak with the young people that were there. May fifth, went to the Tomastian's Thirty-First Anniversary. And then, also, on May eleventh, HIP Housing had their annual luncheon. And it's just so important to see how, really, their program does home sharing and matches people, especially around the, the rise of rents around the Bay Area. Matches people that, you know, may have a home, and then maybe someone might be looking for a room. And so, actually, Kevin Durant's mom was a guest speaker. You know, the real MVP, basically. And so, at that very same time, Philippine Airlines opened their San Mateo office in, or, but it's in San, their San Francisco office in San Mateo. So, they had their grand opening and blessing. Also, Our Lady of Mercy, if you have, it was this past weekend. It was Friday and Saturday, but they had also their spring festival. And this time, they had rides. So, it was definitely, it was like a mini county fair, but a city fair. And mentioned earlier was our very successful gun buyback. I'd like to say thank you to all of the staff. I see Chief Hensey there, and also Sergeant Harrison, who put this together. And Councilmember Sylvester was there. And I know if Vice Mayor Buenaventura was able to make it, I know he's there in spirit, a huge advocate for this as well. But we had two hundred seven guns that were, two hundred seven guns that were now out of, you know, not, out of homes, out of, you know, the hands that, you know, could fall into someone that may be feeling, you know, not well, and can use it for, unfortunately, sometimes for suicide, or fall into the hands of criminal activity. So, I, I just want to commend everyone that participated, from the staff, and also, all of those that contributed. These were monies from asset forfeiture, as well as monies from Congresswoman Jackie Speer, Supervisor David Canapa, to Town of Coma. And then, also, this year, we had the City of Pacifica support, you know, this as well. And it's all a community effort, and really, to provide more safety in, in our, in our Daly City and beyond. And it's because it came from everywhere. So, thank you again, and also, the San Francisco HIP-B free. Given the fact that we have over fifty now, it's fifty-eight percent Asian Pacific Islanders in Daly City, it's so important, and the statistics are one in twelve may have, you know, hepatitis B. So, it's important to ensure that you get tested, and, you know, get vaccinated, and then, or, and ensure that, you know, it's, it's prevention and, and health. So, last but not least, I do want to bring up that there has been actually some, I'd like to bring this to the council next, next meeting, around a resolution opposing the citizenship question on the twenty-twenty census. You know, it's, I think, given the diversity of our communities, it's, it's important for us to, to stand up as Daly City. And it's just not, you know, it, it's not something that needs to be on the census. And you'll be seeing that at, at the next meeting that we have. And thank you for your support with that, Attorney Zimmerman. And we'll be seeing that at our next meeting.
I'd like to make a little comment here. The Mayor mentioned that the three council members down there supported the gun buyback program, but I want to make it clear that the entire City Council, Councilmember Gangona and myself were strong advocates of the gun buyback program, and I'm sure that was just an oversight on her part not to mention that.
Oh, I was just mentioning, you supported as well. I was mentioning who was present, and thank you for your comment, Judah.
You're very welcome.
And...
Something that we all support, and we ask the community to support that as well. It looked like they did this time.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. I was just talking about, you know, who was present and usually, you know, interfacing with the public, but thank you so much. I think we all, we all understand that our communities must be safe, and working together, we must do that. So at this point, I'd like to ask if any of our staff, Ms. Martel, do you have any reports at the moment?
I have one announcement, actually. I just want to share with the City Council and the public that the Finance Director, Lawrence Chu, and his staff in the Finance Department, I see one still left, Jason in the back, the Finance Department, I've been notified by the Government Finance Officers' Association, is the recipient of the Finance Officers' Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the department received this award in recognition of the excellence of our comprehensive annual financial report, our CAFR, which, if you recall, we presented the CAFR to you in December. We do that each year. And as a result of the high-quality work that went into producing the CAFR, they received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I want to underscore, because I know transparency is so important to the council, that receiving this award exemplifies financial transparency. And our ability to produce in our CAFR in a truly transparent way the financial condition of this city, and to be acknowledged for that with this award, I think, is the ultimate achievement of our staff in the Finance Department. And I want to congratulate Lawrence and all of his staff for a job well done.
And your staff.
I want to say thank you, the Mayor, Council for our support, for keeping the city financial transparency and balancing the city budget really. Thanks for all your help and support, especially to the City Manager for her leadership and guidance in putting together the CAFR and the budget. Appreciate it.
If I could say something?
Vice Mayor?
Let me say that, you know, you have a hard job, and I know we don't make it easy on you. We fire a lot of questions at you that you have to come up with the answers right away, and you do your best that you can, and I know that it's difficult. And so I want you to know how appreciative we are, even though we hit you with a lot of questions, and sometimes it gets, you know, a little intense, but you always give us the information we ask for. And so thank you for that.
I just want to make sure, Lawrence, that you share our enthusiasm and appreciation with your entire staff. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. At this point, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Necesita Igtanlock Ruiz, who was a resident of Daly City, and also, as mentioned earlier, all of the fallen officers. We also have Elias Ortega, which is Daly City Police Officer Jose Ortega's grandfather. May we all have a moment of silence? Thank you.